Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Cepeda. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
My pledge remains to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of circumstances. Heavenly Father, we humble ourselves before you today and we thank you for who you are. And this morning, we have a very special prayer for all of the people in Hillsborough County in Florida that have been affected by this horrific storm. We just thank you. We pray a special prayer for all of our first responders, law enforcement that were out there working so hard and diligently, and all of our team here at Hillsborough County, our family here, Hillsborough County family. We just thank you for each and every one of them and we pray a special blessing on them. They've been out there working so hard to help restore our county back to normal, but we pray that our county will be not only restored, but it will be better than before as we've learned so much through this of the changes and things that we can do to make it better. And we just thank you that your provision come in to make the restoration better than before. And we pray a special blessing on those that have been working so hard. And we just pray for those that have been devastated, that lost so much, their homes, they've lost things inside of their homes, everything, that some have lost everything. And we pray for them, a special prayer for peace in their hearts, peace in each and every one of their family members. And we just thank you right now and we pray your blessing over this meeting this morning in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Commissioner Cameron Cepeda for that heartfelt invocation. I'd like to announce that Commissioner Cohen will be participating remotely this morning. And today, it's our pleasure to celebrate the accomplishments of six outstanding young people as we present the Board of County Commissioners Youth Excellence and Achievement Awards, also known as the YEA Awards. This is the 14th year of the program, which was created to recognize young people's positive contributions in areas such as academics, community service, and the performing arts. Now, I can tell you, being around here since all 14 years, this is one of the ceremonies I look forward to the most every year. It warms my heart and gives me great hope for the future to see how much these young people have accomplished in such a short period of time. Before we introduce the honorees, I want to recognize the members of the Hillsborough County Commission on the Status of Women. The Commission on the Status of Women does an outstanding job each year of selecting the YEA Award winners. Must be a wonderful challenge to pick just six winners from all the wonderful nominees and we certainly appreciate their service. I know Chair Lee Lowry is with us here today along with a very special guest, so Chair Lowry would like to come forward and say a few words.
Yes, I would love to. And it is, it is very difficult to pick these winners for sure. It's an outstanding group of kids. I'm Lee Lowry. I'm the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women for Hillsborough County, very proud to represent. We have one of our members with us today, Rebecca from the Children's Board. I appreciate her joining us. I hope you're all well after the storm and we really do appreciate everything the board and the county did to keep us all safe and to restore us, so we appreciate that. The Commission on the Status of Women is a group of dynamic women who represent the Board of County Commissioners and organizations like the Children's Board, the Spring, USF, and many others. And I need to put on my glasses to read the rest of this. Two of our most important tasks are to select the honorees for the Women's Hall of Fame. I do want to give a plug for that. Those nominations are open on the county's website, so if you know a fantastic woman who deserves to be honored in that way, we hope you'll make a nomination. And then to do these YEA Awards. And indeed, it was difficult. We had, I don't know, I don't remember how many, Rebecca, I mean 30 or 40 applications, I believe it was. So, you know, just outstanding kids, really difficult to decide. But as you can see, we did decide and you guys are here today. I do want to give also a special big shout out. Today, you guys will be getting a gift card from us, from the Commission on the Status of Women, but you'll also be receiving a laptop courtesy of Mr. Tony Salvaggio, who's with us from E-Smart Recycling. So, thank you so much, Tony. And with no further ado, I'll turn it back over to y'all and you can announce the winners. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Tony, did you want to come up and say a couple of words? We certainly appreciate you donating these computers. I know you've done it in the past and I know we appreciate it and I know the students certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Oh, man, thank you so much for the opportunity just to be here. I love this city. I love this county. I always say it, when I came here in 2011, I didn't know anybody. And this county just opened its doors and arms and it's just such a wonderful opportunity. To everybody here, to the kids, to the award recipients, this community is so amazing and it works like a machine. And the more you give to that machine, the more that machine is going to give back. And I'm a testament to that. And that's why it's so important to be here. So, give back, connect to your community, go out, and we'll be here to have your back. So, thank you so much. Have a good morning, everybody.
Thank you, sir. All of our six honorees have demonstrated a special drive, determination, and commitment to our community that are crucial for the next generation of leaders. Too often, it's the worst examples of teen behavior that are displayed and get attention on the internet and the news while young people who excel and do good deeds go unnoticed. We take a different approach in Hillsborough County. The young people who devote themselves to the betterment of the community through strong leadership and determined action will shape our future. This board and the residents of Hillsborough County are committed to honoring and encouraging their efforts. So, today, we celebrate the next generation of the YEA Awards. There are three categories: leadership, community or volunteer service, and success despite difficult odds. One award in each category goes to a student in middle school and one award in each is presented to a high school student. Commissioner Miller will present the first two awards.
The YEA Award recipients in the leadership category demonstrate positive impact on others in an ongoing endeavor such as the arts, sports, and academics. Would Grayson Zerulich and his family please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome. When he was in the eighth grade at Randall Middle School, Grayson demonstrated exemplary leadership skills through his involvement with Operation Veteran Connect. This nonprofit organization engages volunteers who are veterans or military family veteran members who want to serve other veterans in need. His first campaign was Warm for the Winter, which provided warm clothing for veterans leaving to temporary housing facilities called New Beginnings. During his tenure, Grayson created an Amazon list and circulated amongst his contacts. Within days, Grayson's doorstep was stacked high with packages of clothing. On Veterans Day, he arrived early and had multiple trips to carry his contributions to over 90 sweatshirts, hats, and socks for distribution. Grayson not only helped up, set up and served over 50 veterans in need, he also assisted with the cleanup, further illustrating his commitment from start to finish. His second campaign, Warm My Walls, aimed at providing framed pictures for veterans' walls to create a homier environment. Grayson dedicated his time to helping veterans select pictures and hang them. His hands-on approach, working shoulder to shoulder with the veterans, was another example of his deep understanding and empathy towards the struggles. Additionally, Grayson has excelled in the principal's honor roll with high honor roll for all three years of middle school and biannually organizes collection for Ronald McDonald House. For his dedication to serving veterans and his other impressive efforts, Grayson Zerulich in middle school is the middle school recipient of the YEA Award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please. First off, I'd like to thank Ms. Pam Plager for nominating me for this award. I also like to thank my mom and dad for motivating me to get involved and volunteer in the community. These opportunities have been a life-changing and volunteering with the veterans and giving back to the people who have given the most for us and our nation has been an amazing experience so far. Hearing the hardships of these veterans has been super humbling and inspiring considering the fact that they have given so much. Thank you for this amazing award and recognition, but I think the real recognition should go to the individuals that have given so much more than just time volunteering, which is why I love working with this amazing organization. Thank you.
Wow, I know y'all must be really proud. We're going to step back here and get a picture. Do they bring her in there? Okay, our next winner is Shay Yashi Bodica, an amazing young woman whose leadership and optimism are inspirations to us all. Unfortunately, she was unable to be here with us today because she's attending her piano graduation ceremony. Congratulations to her on her latest achievement. Accepting the award on her behalf is Kendall Nickerson, her inquiry skills teacher. Would you kindly join me at the podium? Very nice to meet you. Good morning. A 16-year-old junior at Strawberry Crest High School, Sharisha has accomplished so much as a pianist and an entrepreneur. As a founder of her nonprofit, The Healing Harmony, Sharisha is committed to using the power of music to help the healing journey of the most vulnerable members of our community. With a special focus on the elderly, the ailing, and individuals with learning differences, she designs and conducts personalized music and movement-based sessions that aid in healing for the sick and help achieve a wide range of musical and non-musical goals. As part of her organization's mission to make music education accessible to all...
Shriyashi.
Shriyashi. I tried really hard. I practiced. Sharisha had donated over 17 instruments, raised over $6,000, and conducted over 24 music movement-based sessions. She also trained over 100 music teachers and 20 volunteers with essential skills needed to teach neurodivergent learners and to help over 1,100 individuals in various organizations. She has earned numerous academic and musical achievements, including the AP Scholar with Distinction and a Lifetime Fellow of the American Junior Academy of Sciences, earning a $10,000 scholarship stipend paid internship at Purdue University Summer Science Program in Genomics. And winning national and international piano competitions, it is no surprise that she was chosen as the high school recipient for the YEA Award in this leadership category. Would you like to say a few words on her behalf? And say her name properly. I'm very sorry.
Hello, my name is Kendall Nickerson. I'm an IB and advanced placement teacher at Strawberry Crest High School. I first met Shriyashi three years ago in my freshman class for advanced placement government. I've since known her in different advanced placement and IB classes and she stuck out immediately as a leader. And one of the things that really kind of helped us bond is she came to me one day and said, "Ms. Nickerson, I've written a book. I've heard that you edit books. Would you mind editing my book?" And I was like, "Wow, sure, I'll give it a shot." And when she told me the premise of the book, it really got to me. She specifically wrote a book called Teaching in Harmony: An Adaptive Guide to Piano Instruction for Neurodivergent Students. She has a neurodivergent sister. I have neurodivergent nephews. And we specifically began bonding over that as she used very specific research-based guides to create a book specifically for teachers of piano instruction to work with these students. After that, she, after talking and working with her families and others, she realized there was so much more she could do even beyond that and created a nonprofit herself called The Healing Harmony, which now has multiple branches in multiple states. It has recruited hundreds of teachers, not only teaching them to teach others, but thousands of volunteers. And that's just one of the things that sticks out in my mind when I think of her. She excels beyond belief in academics. She's president of multiple clubs, including our Red Cross and Science Olympiad and HOSA. As you heard, she's won multiple accolades, awards, tens of thousands of dollars in scholarships. And what really gets me is that she is an extremely humble student. You would never know this. I have pages and pages of the things that she has achieved and I had to really get that from her mother because she really didn't want to tell me all of the things that she had achieved. She just doesn't see it as making her special and I think it's the exact opposite. Makes her beyond special. I thank so much the Commission and the Commission on the Status of Women for taking time to point these students out because a lot of times we say, "We look forward to seeing what students will accomplish," and this young lady is already accomplishing them. She's already making a difference in the world today for hundreds, if not thousands, of people. And it just leaves me in awe and others as well. So, I think it's amazing that she's able to get this. And just in case you missed it, I kind of feel like a fraud being up here, but the reason why she's not here today is she's receiving her associate's degree and being admitted into the Royal Conservatory of Music in Canada. So, she's graduating there and that's kind of a big deal as well, so that's why she couldn't be here with her family today. So, we let her off on that one, but thank you so much, sure.
She sounds like an amazing treasure and I wished I could meet her, but it sounds like she's gone for a very good reason. So, we're going to grab a quick photo. If you want to hold on this.
Okay. Thank you. I'm a high school teacher. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Now, Commissioner Karen Cepeda will present our next two awards.
The YEA Award recipients in the volunteer or community service category give their time to make life better for others. This describes Adam Saunders to a T. Adam, would you and your family please come to the podium?
Adam Saunders has the gift of helping others in his heart. An eighth grader at Mulrennan Middle School in Valrico, he is constantly thinking of ways to help those around him. This deeply caring nature began when he was little. If he saw a homeless person, he gladly gave up his snacks, drinks, and any pocket change he had. Even today, his mom says, Adam asks that his family stop their car so he can help people in need. He shares his kindness locally, far, and wide. Since he started attending Mulrennan, Adam has volunteered in a myriad of ways. He has spent many weekends cleaning up after hurricanes in affected areas. He has made more than 20 blankets for the charity, My Very Own Blanket, which works to provide new blankets for children in foster homes. He has mowed lawns for people in the community who are disabled, single parents, elderly, or otherwise in need. He accepted the 50-yard challenge through the Raising Men and Women Lawn Care Organization. He committed to mowing 50 yards for free in his community and he is working hard to achieve that goal. In addition, Adam volunteered to help coach a youth ball hockey league and spent many hours practicing and helping young children. These are just a few examples of his community service. In school, Adam works hard, is always respectful to his teachers, and never hesitates to help classmates who need it. He is a member of the Mulrennan Middle National Junior Honor Society. He also spent a year as the president of his church youth organization and planned and carried out many service projects. Adam never seeks attention for his good deeds. He simply loves helping and serving others. Adam's heart and his desire to improve the lives of others earned him this year's YEA Award in the middle school volunteer or community service category. Adam, thank you for all that you do. You make our community better and happier. Congratulations. It's awesome.
Adam, would you like to say a few words?
Good morning. Good morning. I would like to thank the Hillsborough County Commissioners and the Commission on the Status of Women for giving me this opportunity. I would like to thank my family who has always supported and encouraged me to serve others, especially my parents and my little brothers, for helping me with my service projects. We are blessed to live in a great community who helps each other. One of my favorite things about service is that we will never run out of service opportunities. I encourage everyone here today to find a way to serve someone today. It can be as simple as holding a door or smiling or just listening to someone who really needs someone to listen to them. We will always find ways to help if we open our eyes and look. Thank you again.
Thank you. That's awesome. Wonderful. Step over and take a few pictures.
Good morning and welcome. Good morning. It's a privilege to recognize a young woman of many talents this morning. Lauren Kimball, a senior at Plant High School in Tampa, was just 13 when she had an experience that changed her life. She was volunteering with the Hillsborough County Youth Leadership Council at Northdale Recreation Center when she struck up a conversation with a little boy about his parents. She learned that he lived in a group home and noticed his clothes were faded and dirty. She decided to do something to help this child and numerous others. She began collecting as many clothing donations as she could by reaching out to friends. In just a few months, she had collected a couple of hundred items. This effort led her to establish a nonprofit called Cares for Kids, where she combined her compassion for the computer science and community service. She developed a website with a search engine that allowed users to input details of the donation they would like to make. For example, the size of clothing and be matched with centers statewide. Lauren also spends about four hours a weekend driving, sometimes as far as 100 miles, to pick up donations, and she promotes her nonprofit on social media. Since its founding in 2021, Cares for Kids has collected almost 10,000 items for kids across Florida. Lauren has also written a children's book titled Buddy Spot Guide on Online Safety, which is directed toward elementary school-aged children. Lauren is the president of the Hillsborough County Youth Leadership Council, for which she helps host community events at local recreation centers, gathers books and food for the local schools, and presents youth issues to this board in addition to school officials. At Plant, Lauren has maintained a 4.0 GPA while pursuing a rigorous course load that includes advanced placement courses and classes at Hillsborough Community College and is president of the Plant Debate Team, for which she became the first Plant student to attend the National Speech and Debate Tournament. In addition, she is a member of the exclusive Beta Honor Society, where she tutors classmates. Lauren Kimball exemplifies the criteria for the Youth Excellence and Achievement Award in volunteer and community service. Lauren, you are one amazing lady. What a blessing you are and thank you so much for all that you do in our community. Would you like to say a few words?
Hello, everyone. First, I would obviously like to thank the Board of County Commissioners and the Commission on the Status of Women. As you guys heard, my category is the volunteer and community service category, which is obviously very rewarding in itself. Having the opportunities that I've had to help those who don't always have somebody to look after them is definitely a very rewarding experience and I'm very glad to be officially recognized for that, but obviously, I am recognized for it in my own head every time that I do it. Thanks. As well, I would like to say that the lessons that I have learned of resilience and kindness through that resilience with working with foster children are lessons that I will take with me throughout my entire life. So, yeah, thank you. Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you. That's awesome. We'll take a few pictures.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Karen Cepeda. Now, Commissioner Kemp will present the YEA Award to the final two students.
And what a well-timed time to give these awards after these two hurricanes, isn't it? A relief to see this future and see all the kindness that we're witnessing here this morning. So, thank you, everyone, and thank you to your families who must be so proud of you and have worked with you and taught you these values. The YEA Award recipients in the success despite difficult odds category have overcome tremendous personal obstacles to attain success and to have a positive impact on others. Would Judah Reagans and his family please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome. Judah, who attends Mulrennan Middle School, knows all about turning challenges into triumphs. Judah's had to navigate more challenges in his 14 years than most adults. Judah was adopted from Africa as an infant and lives with... He even takes notes in class and participates in discussions. Judah is also an accomplished flag football player, a valued and beloved team member for his incredible speed and unwavering support for his teammates. He's the first to check on and encourage injured teammates, to calm down heated players -- we could use you -- a lot, and to hype up those sitting on the bench. Even though Judah does not speak, his face is always bright, positive, and encouraging. He has the attitude of a champion and manages to encourage everyone he's around with high-fives or a pat on the back. Furthermore, he's always helping. On school spirit days, it's as if the days were led by Judah. He dresses up and greets all his friends, which is everyone, and he high-fives and spreads positivity like no one else. Judah thrives on brightening other people's day and is an inspiration for everyone. Judah, for your hard work, your spirit, your ability to overcome challenges, I'm proud to recognize you as the middle school winner of the Success Despite Difficult Odds category. Congratulations. Oh, do we have -- because I was -- you'd like to speak? Okay. Great.
Good morning to everyone in my Hillsborough County family. I am thankful for my family, principal, friends, teachers, and staff that support me and help me meet my goals. My goals are to make the track team in high school, play college football, and hopefully play football one day for the Baltimore Ravens. My world is different compared to other people. I can't talk, but I am very confident in who I am, even though I communicate differently than you. For example, this is an augmentative communication device, and I'm using it to help me speak. With this, I can talk to my friends and ask my teachers questions. Even though I can't talk, I can still stand up for myself and others. I would like to tell other students with disabilities to keep a positive attitude and keep working hard, and you can achieve your dreams too. Don't worry with people who don't understand you. Just stay focused and find a good friend group. Even though things may be hard, everyone is good at something. So don't give up. Keep going. Reach your goals. I am thankful to Hillsborough County for choosing me for this award. Fellow students, good luck with your future life and journey. God bless everyone. Have a good day and stay safe.
And we'll all go up here and take a photo. We'll now conclude this year's Yay Awards ceremony by introducing an incredible young woman. Would Jordan Gorley and her parents please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome to you all. Senior at Newsome High School, this determined 17-year-old is proof that a persistent and compassionate spirit can overcome many physical challenges. Jordan was diagnosed with stage IV rhabdomyosarcoma, an aggressive type of soft-tissue cancer, when she was three years old. Since then, Jordan's had more than 20 surgeries. She's legally blind in her left eye and deaf in her left ear. However, if you met her, you'd never know that she lives with these challenges. Despite medical setbacks due to her cancer treatment as a child, Jordan thrives academically and in her extensive volunteer activities. Jordan's a member of the National Honor Society, made high honor role, takes AP high school courses, tutors pediatric oncology patients through One Voice Foundation, and has earned a cumulative district GPA of 4.7. Jordan also generously gives her time to multiple organizations for volunteer and fundraising efforts. She volunteers in the agricultural program for the Florida State Fair, assists with animal care and events at the R and R Ranch, and serves as a national spokesperson for Compassion to Care, childhood cancer foundation. She's also raised tens of thousands of dollars for multiple organizations that benefit to fight pediatric cancer. On top of all these selfless activities, Jordan still has time to adopt and care for a rescue cat. In recognition of Jordan's strength, hard work, and caring heart, I'm happy to recognize her as a Yay Award winner in the Success Despite Difficult Odds category for high school students. And thank you, Jordan, for showing that no hurdle is too great to stop you. So would you give this and if you would like to say a few words?
Good morning. It is truly an honor to be standing here today to receive the Yay Award. I want to start by thanking the Hillsborough County Board of Commissioners, the Commissioners of Status of Women, my family, and Maria Masalio, who is the founder of the One Voice Foundation, where I am able to support pediatric cancer patients in the Tampa Bay area. Many years ago, my parents were busy raising three young kids, fully focused on work and family. When I became ill, all of our lives changed drastically. My family had to lean on the support of family, friends, foundations, and an incredible community that rallied around us. If you look closely, you can always find a silver lining, even in your darkest days. Through my own personal journey, I have found that I have come to understand the profound importance of giving back to those in need during their darkest days. Volunteering, advocating, and paying it forward are not just actions for me; they are essential parts of who I am today and the person I aspire to be. Thank you.
And now, if we can all go for a group photo.
I know with the exceptional young students that we have here today, I'm comforted knowing that the future is very bright, and we're very proud of you here. So, congratulations and best of luck in all of your future endeavors. Now, Commissioner Myers will present our final recognition this morning.
Good morning and thank you, Mr. Chair. Would the following individuals please join me at the podium? Marilyn Alvarez, Hispanic Liaison for the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office; Officer Liz DeJesus, City of Tampa Police Department; Norma Rumino, representing the Hispanic Advisory Council of the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office; Maria Jose Flashroll, President of the Hispanic Professional Women's Association; and Ellie Rodriguez, Community Liaison for the Hispanic Community. Good morning and welcome. Hillsborough County is a treasure drove of diverse culture, and the diversity of our community is our greatest strength. At the core of this is our vibrant Hispanic community. Since 1988, Hispanic Heritage Month has been recognized for the 30 days across the nation, especially here in Hillsborough County. Hispanic people are a vital part of the fabric of our neighborhoods, making up 30% of our population. It is a pleasure to present this proclamation to Master Deputy Alvarez, declaring September 15, 2024, to October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month. The proclamation reads, whereas one of the greatest treasures of the United States is the variety of its people and cultures, and Hispanic Americans are an integral part of the nation, and whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, over 62 million Hispanic Americans live in the United States, the nation's largest minority group, with approximately 6 million in Florida and over 460,000 in Hillsborough County, which is over 30% of the county's population, and whereas, Hillsborough County is host to a rich Hispanic community with ties in Cuba, Colombia, Puerto Rico, Mexico, Dominican Republic, Spain, Costa Rica, Venezuela, and other nations, and whereas, the vibrant Hispanic influence can be seen in all aspects of Americans' life and culture, including the arts, science, business world, academia, the U.S. Armed Forces, athletics, and government, and whereas, Hispanic Americans contribute, enrich the county's heritage, and help establish the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity, illustrating all that is best about the nation, and whereas, Hispanic Heritage Week was commenced under President Lyndon Johnson in 1968 to pay tribute to the Hispanic Americans, and was brought in by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. And whereas, Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the achievements of Hispanic Americans and recognizes the number of contributions of local Hispanic American leaders who have positively impacted Hillsborough County, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 15 through October 15, 2024, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate the numerous contributions of Hispanic Americans to the nation, state, and Hillsborough County executed this 23rd day of October 2024. And now, I present the proclamation to Marilyn.
Good morning. Good to see you as always.
Good morning. Good to see you.
Would you like to share a few words with us?
I'll say a few words, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Myers and all of our commissioners. It's an honor to stand up here on behalf of my fellow Hispanic leaders and the Hispanic community as a whole. We are very grateful for this recognition, and I also want to say a special thank you to the commissioners, who throughout the year meets with our Hispanic leaders one-on-one to discuss any type of issues and show their interest, and know that they're here for our community, and we definitely look forward to continuing these one-on-one meetings in the future. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you. As a commissioner, I do enjoy meeting -- let's show some love. I do enjoy meeting with the Hispanic groups quarterly. It is very nice, and Ellie, thank you for always coordinating on our behalf. Thank you.
I'll move back and take a group picture now. Bonnie, you want to review the change of the agenda? And I know we also have the item that Commissioner Wohlstall added, that we need to have a separate vote in order to add it to the agenda. So should we do that first?
We can do that first. I can read it for you. It's for board consideration pursuant to Rule 13 of Rules of Order. It's item F6. This is to direct Solid Waste to bring a resolution to enact emergency rate for agricultural disposal.
All right. So can we have a motion to add that to the agenda?
Move forward.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second, Commissioner Wohlstall. Please record your vote to add F6 to the agenda.
This is Commissioner Cohen. I vote aye.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
All right. I'll continue. We have several off-the-agenda items. Item E3, this is at 10:45. This is to receive a special appearance by Kevin Guthrie, Executive Director of the Florida Division of Emergency Management. Just for your information, Mr. Guthrie does need to leave promptly at 10:45. Item F4 is at 10:45 to direct the Hillsborough County work with the City of Tampa, Plant City, to obtain an independent investigation to assess what caused a devastating stormwater flooding that occurred along Fowler Avenue in the University area and the Forest Hills neighborhood of Tampa, and in areas of Plant City, and make recommendations of how to protect the public from these events in the future. That's by Commissioner Kemp. Item F5 by Commissioner Miller is at 11 o'clock. This is to direct Hillsborough County to work with the Southwest Florida Water Management District to initiate discussions and planning for a potential task force or multi-agency coordination to address the water quality, flood control, and environmental management of Shangri-La, Shangri-La Lake, Baker Creek, Pemberton Creek, and Lake Tharnata Sasa. This effort should also include coordination with the City of Tampa, Plant City, relevant property owners, and other stakeholders as related to ensure comprehensive management and collaboration. We have one item that has been deferred to November 13. This is item G2, the off-the-agenda item to receive an update on the One Water Project, including the number of MBEs working on the project. We have a few revisions or corrections to the agenda. Item E1 will now be heard at 10:15 instead of 10:45, which is a special appearance by Santiago Carrada, President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their semi-annual activity report. Item B2 is now at 11:15. This to approve the modification to the county's surs development plan for fiscal year 2425 to reflect the increased amount of funding in the amount of $6 million to be allocated to the Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau for enhanced destination marketing to include both domestic and international visitors. Item E2, now at 10:30, is a special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO of the Tampa Bay Economic Development Council Final Activity Report for 2024. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions by Commissioner Wohlstall. It's item A28. This to approve and execute an agreement with the highest-ranked and best-qualified firm, Balcony's Resources, Inc., for the construction and operation of a new recovered materials processing facility for the Solid Waste Management Department. We have several items for time certain. The first one, 9:45, item E3, to receive a special appearance by Kevin Guthrie, Executive Director of the Florida Division of Emergency Management. 10 o'clock, item C1, receive a briefing on Hurricane Milton. Item 10:15, F1, by Commissioner Hagan, to direct the county administration Item F4 by Commissioner Kemp at 10:45, direct the Hillsborough County work with the City of Tampa and Plant City to obtain an independent investigation to assess what caused the devastating stormwater flooding that occurred in various areas in the county. Item F5 at 11 o'clock by Commissioner Miller, direct the Hillsborough County work the Southwest Florida Water Management District to initiate discussions and planning for potential task force, multi-agency coordination to adjust water quality, flood control, environmental management throughout the county. Item E1 at 11:15 is a special appearance by Santiago Carrata, President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their semi-annual activity report. Item B2 at 11:15 to approve the modification of the county's turn development plan for fiscal year 24 and 25 to reflect the increased amount of funding and the amount of $6 million to be allocated to the Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau for enhanced destination marketing to include both domestic and international visitors. Item F5 at 11:15 by Commissioner Miller, direct the Hillsborough County work the Southwest Florida Water Management District to initiate discussions and planning for potential task force, multi-agency coordination to adjust water quality, flood control, environmental management throughout the county. Item E1 at 11:15 is a special appearance by Santiago Carrata, President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their semi-annual activity report. Item B2 at 11:15 to approve the modification of the county's turn development plan for fiscal year 24 and 25. Item E2 at 10:30 is special appearance by Craig Richard, President and CEO of Tampa Bay Economic Development Council. 11:45 recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
All right. Come up for air. Can we have a motion to approve the changes? Motion Commissioner Kemp, second. Commissioner Miller, please record your vote. Changes the agenda?
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
Okay. We'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from the citizens on any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. However, at the same time, it is requested when you address the Board that comments are not directed personally at staff or the Board, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for a public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which the requests to speak have been received. Three minutes be given to each speaker. Please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. First three speakers this morning are Brooke Ward, followed by David Coleman and Renee Garcia. Is Ms. Ward here? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us here. My name is Brooke Ward. I am the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch and also part of the larger Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition. What an awesome, inspiring, and uplifting way to start our morning during a pretty tough time, and I want to echo Chair Hagan's comments that the future is bright, and for that reason, we should be protecting our future. And that's why I'm here today to call on this Board for immediate climate action. The last month has been tough, maybe the understatement of the year. I watched as my aging parents had lost their home to 12 feet of storm surge, spent weeks in sewer-like conditions trying to salvage what we could. I know people who drowned in their homes. And then Milton came. And I think it's safe to say that that was one of the most terrifying storms that we've directly experienced, at least in my lifetime, as a lifelong Floridian of the Tampa Bay area. Boarded up our homes, heard as winds tried to rip off our doors and windows, woke up the next morning to incredible debris, widespread power outage, traffic lights down. It was the Wild West out there. The community did come together, though, and we survived. And I know that I'm not the only one who had these experiences. They're widespread to our entire community. For the last year, the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition has been coming to you and asking for action, for an affordable energy and climate action plan that would help to protect us and prevent against these types of climate events. Whether you believe in climate change or not, not an issue. It's, did these storms happen? Are they going to keep happening? And they are happening, and they're getting worse, and the effects are detrimental, and we were not prepared. So that's why I'm asking that the County Commission take the first step and start a Climate Action Committee. Emergency Management Committee has a ton that they're already dealing with, and this is a very, very large topic that needs to be addressed. Other cities and counties around the state have been doing likewise, and so today we're calling on you to start a Climate Action Committee with members of this Board, members of the community, and key stakeholders to come up with recommendations on how we can prevent and protect from these climate events in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. David Coleman, I believe is virtual, then Renee Garcia and Ashton Maddox. Mr. Coleman, are you on the line?
David Coleman, I can hear you, Mike. Go ahead, Mr. Coleman.
Go ahead, sir.
Hello?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Okay. You can hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is David Coleman, and I was going to read what was just read to you. Basically, Channel 8 had posted this morning on the news all those words about TECO and Archie Collins and your new disaster resilience plan. Well, I'm not going to reread it, just hang with those words that she just read in your ears. Disaster resilience is something that we have, I have been begging for. The city has begun. They published three books about the subject over the past four years, and I believe that the county has been lacking. And then now you're going to hire Archie Collins? You're going to rely on TECO, who are not our friends, as you just heard from my friend Brooke Ward. TECO is, we're a board of failed companies called TECO. They constantly go to the PSE to get rate hikes, the fines that they have, and are rewarded rate hikes on us instead of fixing their own problems. TECO has a 30-year commitment, I thought of Jay Collins, for gas. Frack gas is crazy, the temperature in the Gulf, which is causing these extreme storms that we're having. It's partially their fault, and you're bringing them in for your disaster resilience plan? And then, oh, here's another good one, $12 million for outside businesses. You sure? You love these more than you do your own citizens. You're not there for us. You're there for business, and you're going to hire outside businesses, $12 million to consult on what we should be doing? Well, I thought that we have an environmental protection committee. I believe that they're supposed to be monitoring and responding when Mosaic does things like dump water into our bay, when TECO has a ship toxic, the online coal ash piles were. I could go on and on about the difficulties with TECO, and you're bringing them in as your prized consultants. For God's sakes, give me a break. You go hire some experts, bring them in as part of the county, and come up with a disaster resilience plan that may work in the future. My own personal place is not Fowler, and it's not Forest Hills, and not one person has come here with water at the corner of the country in Florida, and nobody from the county has come. And as was already repeated, I believe I'm walking in sewage soil, and I'm breathing sewage air, and I don't know what is in my water because you used to come here and check my water because I'm in one of those gray water districts. If you don't start responding, I don't know what the heck to do. Start lawsuits against you? All right. And before I run out of time, I've got to mention that Victor Chris came to a forum, a candidate forum, that half the candidates didn't show up, including Hagan, and he came to, he came to me, and he said that on A27, that where CDC was supposed to be...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. Next three speakers, Renee Garcia, Ashton Maddox, and Michael DeClerc. Good morning.
My name is Renee Garcia. I'm speaking here on behalf of GenCleo, the Hillsborough County Affordable Energy Coalition as a Florida native and as a resident of Hillsborough County. This once-in-a-100-year storm has truly shocked Tampa to its core, and I think it's been made quite clear by members of the community. It's also been made clear that our power grid is not suitable enough to handle the power of a storm such as Hurricane Milton. Residents of Tampa, of course, are angered and encouraged to take action by the formation of a committee, collaboration between Commissioner, our commission members, stakeholders, and members of the community through the Climate Action Committee. Personally, I live on Fowler, and so I was right at the front of like the flooding that we all saw, but as well, I'm also a college student, so money can be tight sometimes. The cost of groceries doesn't really help with that either. After Hurricane Helene, I came back from the place where I initially evacuated from, and I went grocery shopping, only for me to have to throw away those same groceries a couple of days later because my apartment complex lost power for days. I share this very similar experience with students, families, and individuals in the county who need to provide for themselves and for other people and who just can't afford the effects of these storms. We know that these strong storms are happening at a faster rate than ever, the cause being increasing global temperatures that are exacerbated by fossil fuel giants. We simply just can't support and continue with this way of life anymore and only hope that our power comes back within a reasonable time. And so for this reason, the County Emergency Management Team, TECO, and members of the community should move forward with the Affordable Energy and Climate Plan to create a more climate-resilient power grid so that it is able to withstand the effects of powerful hurricanes and provide a power to stakeholders. Furthermore, the switch to clean and reliable energy should be emphasized in order to not have to fear running out of gas to power your backup generator or have to wait hours for hours to get gas for your car, which is a very real fear. I would also like to end by thanking all the linemen and for, you know, working around the clock and putting their lives on the line to restore our power. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ashton Maddox, followed by Michael DeClerc, and then Carol Wells, who is virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ashton Maddox. I'm speaking on behalf of GenCleo and the Hillsborough Affordable Energy Coalition, like some other people here. I'm here to speak to you all regarding not only the response to the two most recent hurricanes that devastated our local community, but also what we can do for the future in the wake of these unnatural disasters. It is imperative that a situation like this cannot happen again. The flooding and the destruction of homes and businesses are devastating to see and very well documented, as I'm sure a lot of people here are going to speak about. As a junior at USF, I've had to miss multiple days of classes every year for three straight years in a row due to hurricanes. This wasn't a once-in-a-100-year storm that hit us. It wasn't unlucky. If it wasn't Hurricanes Helene and Milton this year, it was Hurricane Idalia last year or Hurricane Ian in 2022 consistently disrupting our lives. This is a repeating annual disaster to our county and a repeating offense that there hasn't been a more detailed response set in place. It isn't just adult university students like myself that are being impacted. It is children being harmed at the expense of lost school days and lost learning. It's widespread power outages creating panic on the roads and causing food to spoil. It's a disturbance to everyday life that while these events can't be avoided entirely, its effect can be minimized. The response to this hurricane has been undoubtedly immense in the days and weeks following these hurricanes. In order to minimize these disasters, longer-term planning, including resilient infrastructure, needs to be in place to further our community. It is due to these reasons that I'm calling on the Board of County Commissioners to please move forward with Affordable Energy and Climate Plan by creating a Climate Action Committee made up of commissioners, community members, and stakeholders. The responsibility is being to put together a report on steps the county can take to prevent and protect our livelihoods from future climate events. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael DeClerc, followed by Carol Wells, and then John Hanson. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Mike DeClerc, and I live at 5011 Oakline View Drive in Lithia, which is in District 4 of Hillsborough County. I'm also the Florida Director of Recycling Operations for Waste Management. You have an item before you today, A28, that we believe warrants further scrutiny before the process is finalized. An RFP was issued in April of this year for a long-term 15- to 25-year agreement with the county to build a new recycling materials processing facility and handle the county's rapidly growing and substantial curbside recycling volume beginning in 2027. Although this RFP explicitly provides for procurement and the evaluation committee to accept and consider best and final offers as outlined in Section 5.1.3.3.2, curiously, county staff has elected not to do this. A 15- to 25-year long-term agreement that involves tens of millions of dollars of investment by the proposers is being treated very much like an invitation to bid for a small procurement. The financial difference between the two proposers is a mere $6.90 a ton. This is a very narrow margin and certainly worth asking both proposers to submit a best and final offer, which is allowed in the RFP, before entering into an agreement that may last until the year 2052. As a taxpayer in Hillsborough County, I do not understand why the county would not seek the best possible financial outcome in this process. In a BAFO situation, the price for these services will only go down and get better for the taxpayers. Why would this not be a good thing? WM's investment into the equipment piece alone is approximately $8 to $10 million more than our competitor. We're installing a system that processes 50 tons an hour versus their 35 tons an hour, has greater redundancy than their proposed system to ensure consistent uptime and twice as many bailers. With the rapidly expanding population in Hillsborough County, we plan to build something not only suitable for 2027 when it opens, but will remain viable throughout the potential 25 years of this agreement. The other proposer with their very slightly lower initial bid is proposing something for today and not for the future. On 9/19, Tampa City Council approved our street vacation application at a second hearing, and that important step has now been enacted by ordinance. The city supports our idea to build an eastern Ebor city, and importantly, our neighbors support the idea. We are ready to invest at least $80 million into the future of recycling in Hillsborough County and build a premier facility the county can be proud of now and for decades to come. We are ready to go. To close, I would ask you to vote no on today's request to enter into an agreement with our competitor. I would further ask that you require staff to do the right thing for the taxpayers of Hillsborough County and receive best and final offers that are additionally open to revenue stream ideas that can only benefit the county and its taxpayers. As I'm limited to three minutes, I have a handout for the commissioners that touches on five main points of financials, experience, property, volume capacity, and equipment.
Just hand them to the clerk, and she'll disseminate them to your right.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Next three speakers are Carol Wells, who's virtual, followed by John Hanson, and then Melissa Nordbeck. Is Carol Wells on the line?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Honorable Board of Members of the Board and Special Speakers, what a awesome morning this has been with your all the accolades. I agree with from previous commenters that a lot needs to be done in preparation for storms. As a lifelong birth resident here of Hillsborough County, I've seen storms through my life that have come and gone, but never one like Milton. Milton has left a very strong impression on all of us who live here. Personally, I've lost part of my house. I have debris that's piled up at the road that needs attention. I know that the workers are getting there on their assigned times. I'm not sure if this is the reason for slowness or whatever, but at any rate, though, as I said, I represent the area of South Florida, which is a beautiful area to live in. The roads are piled high, the wires are down. I spoke with someone from Frontier yesterday. They have downed power lines two weeks after the storm. This is something that I guess responses are very slow. I'm concerned for the water quality. As someone at one of the previous commenters said, our water quality, we want to be sure that we're not inhaling or inviting the bacterial problems that other counties have experienced with lesheding bacteria is what I refer to. I'm also concerned, as I said, for the over-water areas that previously I had never seen water flood before this year. I've seen it, and I'm certain that it's probably because of the overpopulation or overdevelopment of certain areas. In my personal area, I have never had any, and I've lived in this particular area over 30 years. I have never seen what I have seen this year. And as I said, I know that everyone's doing what they can. I appreciate it. However, I think that a more determined plan, as previous commenters said, needs to be made in order to handle these types of emergencies. One does not know when they're going to happen. At least, we really did not have a whole lot of preparation. We were in the back of Helene, and then this came suddenly, and as someone else said, I lost everything that was in my freezer. So, you know, we took a lot to be thankful for, but we also have a lot that we need to plan for. Funding is essential, and I trust that the Board will enact all of that. I want to thank Commissioner Hagan for his quick attentiveness whenever I called in. I want to thank Commissioner Hagan for his quick attentiveness whenever I called in. He has been very easy to communicate with, and I thank him. And I look forward to some changes within the next meeting, hope to be attending, and hope that the changes will be able to be broadcast to us and let us know what's been changed. I know it's not a long time for today, but even so, we can at least get a plan together and get moving. And I thank you all, and I wish everyone a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Appreciate your comments. Next three speakers, John Hanson, followed by Melissa Nordbeck, and then Rebecca Futch-Berkley. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is John Hanson with Belcones Resources, a part of the business development and facility development team. Here to talk about what Mr. DeClerc just spoke of, about the recycling facility, that we were the successful bidder through the first round here of this contract. We did go ahead and put forth our best number, and we went through the process of competing in a very long, difficult RFP that was put out. And we do have a facility that is going to be built that has way excess, much excess capacity for the city. It is designed as a 35 ton an hour system out of the gates because that is basically double what the city needs, or Hillsborough County needs, excuse me. However, we do have the ability to add on, on top of that. We can add more tons to that facility at any given time during the length of this contract. It is a long contract, and we will be doing upgrades. We've done that throughout our history. After a facility is built, we continually stay with the time. So it's tough to have a, go through a long RFP process, bring your best, everybody's got their numbers on the table, and then have it go back and have someone try to say we need to do it one more time. So we look forward to working with the county very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Melissa Nordbeck.
Good morning.
Good morning. Boil water notices, sewage backing up into people's homes, millions and millions of gallons of untreated wastewater dumped into our waterways, and all of this even before the hurricanes. If there was ever a time to hit a pause on development, it is now. It is time to reverse your vote that eliminated wetland setbacks. It's time to reverse your vote for developers to build even when a school is over capacity by allowing them to simply write a check and call it a school mitigation credit. It is time to reverse your vote to allow developers to extend county utilities into the rural area, to facilitate more development where there is no infrastructure to support it. You have spent millions in taxpayer dollars in the city of Tampa and other counties to take our waste, yet you keep approving more and more development claiming capacity exists for these projects. And now is the time to deny the expansion of the urban area. The September 26 land use public hearing was canceled due to Hurricane Helene. On that night's agenda were proposals to allow development of over 2,000 rural acres in Wyomama. Eisenhower Property Group is the largest offender. Their business model seems to be buy land in the countryside, make large donations to candidates running for office, as much as $20,000 in one day to the District Four candidate, and then file comp plan amendments and rezoning applications for subdivisions. This public hearing has been rescheduled for November 7th, coincidentally after Election Day. I urge you to reflect on the devastation to our county and vote for solutions, not rubber stamp more development.
Thank you, Ms. Nordbeck. Rebecca Futch-Berkley. Rebecca here. Okay, followed by Denise Herndon, and then Matthew Taylor.
Hi. So I've lived, my family has lived on the property that I live on for, since before America was America. And we've never seen flooding like this. Like, we had waist-deep water. We lost animals in this flood. We almost lost all of our dogs, and it was bad. And they're trying to circle me in. They're trying to circle me in with this new development, and I'm halfway circled in already. And if they do circle me in, God only knows what's gonna happen. Like, it's, it's bad. But that's not the only thing I want to talk about. I want to talk about the fact that I'm Native American, and because I'm not on the rolls, I can't get tribal rights, but yet this Hillsborough County and the state of Florida can get all the profits from the Seminole Hard Rock Casino. What do they do with those profits? Are those profits helping the people? That's really a concern of mine because I've searched for my culture my whole life. My family wouldn't really talk about it because we're whitewashed, if anybody knows what that means. We're indoctrinated. We were taught not to know what we were. Well, I figured out what I am. And on the CW Cone property, there's actually graves of my ancestors. And I'm watching as these developers are building on top of my ancestors, my grandmothers, my grandfathers, my people. And it really is not okay. And if that's not bad enough, now I'm flooded because of it, and that's, I gotta stop now. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Denise Herndon. Ms. Herndon here. Okay, followed by Matthew Taylor. Yep. And then Josie Ficki. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I've been in my house 25 years now, and I live on a lake. Fortunately, I didn't have any flooding. I live in a stilt home, so I wouldn't have any. But sometime this week, since I don't drive, I walk, Hillsborough County was out cleaning a sewage pipe because a business on the northwest corner of Gorton Lake Road and 60, their lift station was backing up. Well, now, two days, there's raw sewage draining into the detention pond in front of that lift station. There's very little flooding that was going on back in there. We were fortunate because everything drains to the different lakes, and then it's taken care of. But the other things that I want to address is the CIT. You guys want to take 20% away from our schools so that you can really do sports complexes? You say it's for other things that are real important, but if you listen to the April 17th County Commissioners' meeting at 2 hours and 24 minutes, you start listening, and it's brought up about where Commissioner Kemp wanted to make sure it wasn't going to stadiums, and other commissioners were bringing up about sports complex. We have issues that aren't being addressed. You are building because you need tax money. You need to get into your current budget and get the waste out of there. The buildings, all the county buildings, all the thermostats are housed in one unit. How much money are we wasting on electricity? Because you're freezing people out, and some of your employees have little fans that run heaters because it's so cold. And then the other thing I want to talk about is the One Mill referendum. I know you guys don't have anything as far as it, but this is the largest audience that I can address. And I went to a meet and greet in Keystone, and Nadia Combs says it's for a bonus, not for pay raises, and then they want to do other things. We voted it down two years ago. Anybody listening to this, you need to talk to people and vote it down. Why does heirs make $330,000 a year? That can take care of several teachers' pay. And we need to get into our budget. You guys, if we can't see every check that's being written, then we don't have transparency. Just giving a lump sum is not transparency. We need to get the fat out of our budget, the school board, and Hillsborough County and sheriff.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon.
Thank you.
Matthew Taylor, followed by Josie Ficki, and then Ruth Beltran. Good morning, sir.
Have the members of this board realized that all the flooding that has taken place during and after Hurricane Milton is a result of your continued approval of unsustainable growth? Years of building in lowlands and building up wetlands has caused unprecedented flooding. Now, I know you bureaucrats will try to say the flooding was caused by a 100-year storm. However, history tells us this 100-year storm theory is just another bureaucratic lie. You see, Madard Reservoir was opened after Hurricane Irma II, and the same failures occurred in 2017. Residents received no warning that Madard's floodgates would be open, and once again during Milton, there was no warning. HCSO is supposed to warn residents anytime the floodgates are opened that Madard and flooding is imminent. The sheriff's office doubled down on their failure and used the department's helicopter to fill the dam and reassure residents that there was nothing wrong with Madard's dam. In fact, the footage is still on the sheriff's office social media sites. If there was nothing wrong with Madard's dam, why is there fresh bags of quick concrete liberally thrown into a hole that washed out behind Madard's spillway? After Hurricane Milton, members of this board have flown around in helicopters, driven around in county vehicles, and met with directors of SWIFT, MUD, and other agencies. You all make sure to smile at every photo opportunity that has presented itself. While flying around and driving around surveying the flood damage caused by Hurricane Milton, has it occurred to you all that flooding has caused by your reckless rubber stamping of new developments in our wetlands and lowland areas? This board approved a new Eisenhower community called Twin Rivers. This new golf course community will be built on the banks of the Hillsborough River, right across the state park. This new community will surely suffer widespread flooding. This board just set up the future Twin River residents for failure. Has anyone on this board seen the flooding that you all have caused and came to the realization that you can't mitigate wetlands? Wetland credits may work on paper, but in the real world, you can't fill in wetlands. This board has done a wonderful job at creating flooded roads and flooded houses. It's been almost two weeks since Milton made landfall. You spent my tax dollars sightseeing from helicopters around Hillsborough County, looking at the flooding on Valrico Road, Mulrendon Road, and let's not forget the Shangri-La neighborhood. What's the plan? Residents in Feather Rock are feeling forgotten. We, the people, want to know what the bureaucrats, you, the bureaucrats, are gonna do about the flooding you have caused. We've warned you that building on wetlands would cause flooding. However, you've ignored the will of the people, and all it took was a little dirty money from developers to make all this happen. When residents present facts to the board like radioactive hills at Madard Park, the District Seven Commissioner belittles and insults whistleblowers. By the way, Commissioner Wustel, your limited ionizing radiation survey didn't say there was no radiation in the hills of Madard Park. Your survey found that the radiation recommended at three and a half hour per day time limit for those radioactive phosphate tailings that kids play on at Madard. Y'all should really put up some warning signs at that park. You should also warn residents that the 700-acre man-made lake is polluted and the unlined Pleasant Grove landfill inside of my dark is the reason why.
Appreciate the comments. Josie Ficki, followed by Ruth Beltran, and then Sierra Beeson. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Josie Ficki. I live out in Valrico, District Four. The recent flooding in our community is not as a result of natural disaster. It is a direct result of neglect and failed leadership from our Board of County Commissioners. We've seen the evidence in public records. We've saw emails, and we even show that Sheriff Chad Cronister recognized these decisions were wrong. This is more than just poor management. It's a blatant dereliction of duty led by the newer commissioners and long-term member, Ken Hagan, who's been on this board since I was in high school. If anyone could answer these questions on building, it should be our chair. This is happening, what's happening now is devastating our communities around the county. Areas that have never flooded before are now underwater, and our workers and linemen are frustrated with what they have witnessed our own county do to our people. A prime example is Dover. Water from the dam was pumped directly into the land where the energy park is being developed. The one park that you want to build 1,900 homes on. The one park that Commissioner Wustel likes to say, "I was in Afghanistan when this was, this was zoned and planned." Well, he's voting on it now, so you're accountable now, Mr. Wustel. The B.O.C.C.'s actions have not only put lives at risk, but they've ignored the guidance of the EPA, conservationists, and our own residents. They prioritize private donors over public safety. This is not just a political issue. It is a matter of life and death as you are risking the lives of our residents with your overbuilding. It is a disaster, if a disaster strikes again, the responsibility should solely respond, be responsible on this commissioner, on this commission. District Four in particular is in crisis. Valrico is struggling with rising waters, and yet Commissioner Miller seems to be concerned with photo ops and helicopters smiling at cameras rather than helping the people that she was appointed to serve. Her disconnect is clear, and she is unfit to lead, especially in this crucial time. These irresponsible choices have already caused irreparable damage and harm. Flooding in areas that never saw water during the worst hurricane season proves that the environmental damage caused by your decisions and negligence, it's time for you all to be held accountable, especially Mr. Hagan. We deserve leadership that puts people before politics and actions before appearances. It's time for change, and it's time to protect our community from those who are supposed to protect it. With that, I ask the community to step forward, just like the citizens of Tenota Sasa, and you need to start your lawsuits. If your, if your property was flooded, start getting public records requests. Start getting emails from your commissioners. Get in with this planning commission. Get your records so you can get a lawsuit.
Appreciate your comments, ma'am. Ruth Beltran, followed by Sierra Beeson, and then Bill Johnson. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ruth Beltran, and I am a community organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, PSL Tampa Bay. I am here because the many emails and efforts to reach out to this commission right here have gone unanswered. A Cinnamon Cove apartment complex right here in Tampa, tenants had to sleep in the streets, on grass, and on mattresses right outside their front door right after the storm. Now, those same tenants are being forced out by their landlord. They were given deadlines of 24 hours, 48 hours yesterday and today to leave their properties. Initially, they were not even told if they will be able to return, but they were told that they will, if they decide to stay, there will be no kitchens and bathrooms in these apartments. These tenants are now leaving in the streets and in their cars. And although these tenants have been forced to leave, they have not been reimbursed for the rent that they paid for the entire month of October. Now, it is true that these tenants have received some help. They received food and help filing their payment application. However, this doesn't mean anything if they are now leaving in the streets. These tenants are working people, disabled, elderly, and fixed income people, which are our most vulnerable neighbors. We must not allow landlords to use Hurricane Milton as an opportunity to unlawfully remove tenants. They are being mass evicted. No evictions have been filed in court. However, they are being told to leave, and they have nowhere to go. I'm sure that the $100,000 that have been given to the business, to the Israeli Business Accelerator Program, could come in handy today to house these tenants. And I am talking about hundreds of tenants. We demand not only that they are moved at the, at the charge of the landlords or this commission right here, but that they are given the opportunity to return to their properties at the same rate that they were paying before this happened. Now, we do know that Cinnamon Cove is using this as an opportunity to kick them out. We do know that through gentrification, once the properties are fit, the landlord will have the opportunity to rent these units at an even higher price while displacing tenants. So I am here to ask of you, what are you going to do about these tenants? I spoke with them this morning. They are leaving in their cars. One of them has an infection in his foot, and he needs to wash it with warm water, which he doesn't even have access to because he lives in his car now. We need a response. I need you to email me back to the many pages of details that I have already sent to you in the last entire week. And I need attorneys who may be listening to this, who want to help these tenants, to call me at PSL Tampa Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beltran. Appreciate your comments. Sierra Beeson, and then Bill Johnson. Good morning.
My name is Sierra. I am an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Many of our most vulnerable community members have been impacted by the storm and have had their apartments flooded, belongings destroyed, and housing made unlivable and have been displaced. One of many such communities was Cinnamon Cove Apartments. This was a community filled with primarily low and fixed income disabled and elderly individuals. Last week, Tuesday, I was out there, meeting with residents and distributing aid. When I was there, I was shocked by the conditions. People were still living in apartments that had previously been flooded, were still waterlogged. The air reeked of mold and mildew so strong that the scent did not leave my nose for days after. There were families with babies with small children, people caring for elderly and disabled parents, people with pets, all suffering from unlivable conditions. Tenants are Tenants are now being told and given like 24 to 24-hour notice verbally that they must leave the apartments for an undisclosed amount of time for repairs. People are being made homeless. People are being forced to stay in shelters. But when I spoke to residents, most outlined reasons why they could not or hesitant, or could not or were hesitant to go there. Many people had pets and children. They did not feel safe, would be safe or comfortable there. One woman I met with had an elderly father with schizophrenia who was worried about having an episode in the shelter. Tenants who have already paid their rent for the month are being pressured to self-evict with no assistance or timeline of return or reassurance that their property will be there, well, when they return, will be there when they come back. While the government, there's been some government assisted, some government assistance and assistance from NGOs like the Red Cross, it is totally insufficient. The reality is that many of these residents will be sleeping on the streets, their possessions thrown out, and they have nowhere to go, including children. There needs to be immediate assistance and housing vouchers, not, not just shelter, but stable housing until, but housing until stable housing can be secured. There also needs to be an investigation into the Cinnamon Cove apartment complex for potentially unscrupulous activities and potentially unlawful verbal evictions. Here with me today is Adrian. He is one of the impacted tenants, and he will be taking the rest of my time.
Hi. My name is Adrian Aye. I don't have a lot of time to talk, so I'm going to keep it short. I'm a victim of your negligence. I live in Cinnamon Cove, a neighborhood inside of Tampa, just north of Fowler, that was told that there would be no flooding, that there would be no need for evacuation. We were the lowest evacuation rating out of anyone. I spoke to four Hillsborough County cops that day, asking them, "Do we need to leave? Do we need to worry?" All of them told me that I had nothing to worry about. October 9th was the worst day of my life. I lost everything. I lost my car. I lost my house, all of my property. Everything was gone, everything. I have nothing to really show for it, except the clothes that are on my back, which, sorry if I didn't dress properly. But the fact of the matter is, when I sat there on the second floor watching everything flood, I noticed there was no drainage. The water was not flowing. It was still once the wind stopped. And I asked myself, "Why was this? What was going on, and why was this happening to us?"
Thank you, sir.
Sir, can you repeat your name for the record, please?
My name is Adrian Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bill Johnson, and then followed by Adam Schoonmaker, who's virtual. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Bill Johnson. I live on the Alify River, and like so many that you've heard this morning, I went through the floods, and I've lived there all my life. But on the 8th of September, I purchased a property next door, which I grew up in, and due to Milton, and like so many, the storm took its toll on that one piece of property next to me. So what I did is I put in for a demo permit, and I know there's a lot of problems for you all to solve, but all's I'm asking, I did the commencement, registered with Hillsborough County. The windows are out. I have pictures here that I'd like to leave with the Commissioner showing that house. I put in, but I'm getting red tape here. I was given a list by your, one of your departments here, and I personally went to Tico and Frontier and all those utilities and the sewer department, the health department, and I keep getting red tape here, and no one seems to want to give me that permit to get rid of that house. So if you just look in the record, that's all I'm asking. Just let me tear the house down. I've done all the proper proceedings that Hillsborough County requires, so if you do that, I'd appreciate it.
Sir, if you can just come over here and someone from our staff, you get your information. Over here to your left.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Last speaker this morning is our Adam Schoonmaker, virtual.
Good morning. My name is Adam, and I am a resident of Hillsborough County. Since Hurricane Milton made landfall two weeks ago, I have been on the ground distributing aid and resources for my fellow Hillsborough County residents with the Party for Socialism and Liberation Tampa Bay. The aftermath of the storm has been devastating for our community, and the response from the county is insufficient. I've seen firsthand that there are families slipping through the cracks. Apartment complexes are kicking out residents without written notice and without connecting them to social services. Many of these families do not have reliable access to internet, nor the time to wait on hold for hours on end. These communities need in-person support with knowledgeable advocates who can communicate in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole. On Monday, October 21st, Hillsborough County extended the local state of emergency. Hillsborough County Commissioners announced plans to investigate recently repaid streets in town and country and allocate more resources to debris removal. The county needs to dedicate this same energy to Tampa Bay's working-class citizens that have been affected by these hurricanes. Ensuring the safety and well-being of our families is more important than cleaning debris, and I know that Hillsborough County has the resources to address both. Tampa Bay needs to make the following commitments. One, to relocate all impacted tenants to safe housing free of charge. Two, to provide food and other necessities free of charge. Three, offer in-person support and advocacy so citizens can find shelter, legal guidance, and first aid. Four, once repairs are made, extend all tenants the right of first refusal and the opportunity to return to the same unit they occupied before with no increase in rent. These commitments are urgent, and immediate action needs to be taken. I met a 72-year-old man sleeping on a wet mattress in front of his destroyed apartment. I met a woman who got a UTI after her home flooded. I met a veteran whose CPAP machine was destroyed. I met many families who are still sleeping in their cars. None of these people lived in flood zones. The current disaster response is insufficient. These folks are being abandoned, and Hillsborough County needs to do more to help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that closes public comment. Commemorate motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Wustel, second Commissioner Myers. Please, according to your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Bonnie, want to induce the first item?
Thank you. Our first item is Item E3. This is to receive a special appearance by Kevin Guthrie, Executive Director of the Florida Division of Emergency Management. And I was going to say a few comments before he spoke, but I don't want to take any of his time. I really want to be cognizant of his time, and then we'll move on to our staff presentation thereafter. And we very much appreciate Mr. Guthrie being here today.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me here this morning. Perhaps at a later date, I can come back and have a more in-depth conversation. There's five things that I wanted to speak about at the request of staff, and that is first and foremost, the state partnership with local jurisdiction shelters, points of distribution, and comfort stations. We are currently filling multiple comfort station requests here for wraparound services. What we mean by that is bathroom, showers, places for people to go and get those basic commodities that they need free of charge that's provided by the state at the request of the county. So those are set up inside of your county, points of distribution. The Florida Division of Emergency Management provides, as a part of the national response framework, we provide state-funded, state-provided labor to points of distribution for typically 72 to 96 hours after a disaster. Why is it 72 to 96? It's time for you guys to get your feet underneath you, get your employees to where they can actually help provide for their community, and we realize that they are two disaster survivors. So that three-to-five-day time span allows, again, your community, your employees who are in the community to get their feet back underneath them and then start helping the community. We are obviously well past that now, so we provide additional food and water in perpetuity as long as you guys need it, but at the end of the day, you guys will be running your points of distribution. Last is the, as I've already mentioned, comfort stations or the shelters. We have taken a proactive measure at the request of the county to have a shelter near the University Mall area that the state of Florida is picking up 100% of the cost for. We knew that we had a community that was impacted there specifically. There's largely Hispanic, Latino, and we were requested to come in and provide that, and we have done so. We were prepared to help provide transportation to them at a center up in Lutes, but we realized that that is not the community in which they live, so we opened up a shelter in that community, and we have done so. Next is the FEMA role in disaster recovery centers. The FEMA's role in disaster recovery centers is, it is a federal facility. It is a federal temporary facility. It is the role of FEMA to provide those. I will tell you, across the United States, FEMA is stretched extremely thin, and the reason I must leave today at 10:45 is I'm meeting the Division Director for FEMA from DC. He's flying into Tampa to see me, and we're going to talk about some of the recovery issues that need to happen here, not only in this community, but across the state. We currently have 54 counties that are declared for individual assistance across three disasters. That means FEMA should be opening up 54 disaster recovery centers. There is a request in both Pinellas and Hillsborough County to open up a minimum of three disaster recovery centers. That is typically unprecedented, as we usually only open up one in each county to service the community. The state has done something unprecedented in that we have brought in state-led recovery centers, and we have in this, in this county, I believe it's two or three multi-agency resource centers that will then hub and spoke off of the one DRC that is here inside the, inside the county. So we have stepped up, and we are providing those resources through contracted services as well as state employees to continue to help out. But again, disaster recovery centers are 100% FEMA's responsibility. I want to shift now to compliance and, you know, unfortunately, what people consider the bureaucratic red tape of a disaster. We have 180 days to get assistance from the federal government, and it's actually more like probably about 174 now, to get assistance on what's referred to as the Disaster Response and Recovery Act, or the DORA Act of, for Section 1206. But it is a time-specific situation. We have 180 days, and not even the President of the United States can extend that time. So for the next 170-something days, I need you as a board to focus on your codes and ordinances. You cannot change your codes and ordinances and retroactively take them back to provide, you know, for lack of a better term, wiggle room and provide softer language. You have to use what was in your codes and ordinances at the time of the disaster. So we've got communities, and again, you can go and research these or Hurricane Ian, that boards put in writers that said, you know, "We'll do the 50% rule plus 20%." That was not looked at very well, and it's going to end up costing community members inside of counties to our south $30 to $40 million in increased flood insurance rates. So please follow what's in your codes and ordinances as relates to flood insurance, as it relates to your just building codes in general. You must follow those. All FEMA wants to see you do is run your process, run your ordinance as it's written. As long as you do that, your community rating system and the insurance discounts that you have as a part of the National Flood Insurance Program should remain intact. I want to thank the board for your laser-focused commitment on debris removal. The governor issued an executive order. He was very bold in that. If we're going to get 100% of debris reimbursed by the federal government for 90 days, then we need to take advantage of all minutes and all hours of those 100, I'm sorry, of those 90 days. So I appreciate Hillsborough County leading away on that and picking up debris 24/7. It is definitely going to make a difference. So again, keep, keep the focus on that. And then last thing I was asked to speak about, and I have about one and a half minutes left, so yesterday marked my 35th year of being a public safety practitioner and professional. I do not stand before you as a politician. I stand before you as a practitioner of public safety that's rooted in law enforcement, but for the last 12 years has been focused on emergency management. I will tell you transparently here, I think everybody should set an expectation that recovery is a long process. We live in an Amazon world where you can order today, and if you're close, it's here in four hours. And that is not going to happen with a disaster. I quote General Henry from years ago at Hurricane Katrina. If it was an inconvenience, they would call these things an inconvenience. But they call it a disaster for a reason. It's a disaster. We hit the fast-forward button in Hurricane Ian, specifically in the Lee County, Charlotte County, Fort Myers area, and it took us a couple of weeks shy of one year to get all of the debris up. And when I say all the debris, I'm talking about all the displaced vessels, all the displaced golf carts, vehicles, everything that was there took us the better part of a year. If I go back to Hurricane Michael, that took the better part of two years. So the mere fact that you guys are so far ahead of where you're at by going 24/7 on the operation for debris removal is a best practice. I would encourage you to continue to do it. But I do want to stand here transparently in front of you and say that all of you, to include the county administrator, which I've had an extensive conversation with, make sure we communicate, make sure we set expectations, make sure you're transparent, and we're doing that with debris removal. We have all of those tools in our toolbox to show the community where we're at on debris removal and how we're doing that and what companies are doing what. But again, we need to set very realistic expectations in our Amazon culture, and that is, this is not going to go away overnight. Recovery is a very, very slow and long process, but I will stand before you today as the governor's authorized representative and the state coordinating officer for the state of Florida. We're not going to leave you. We're going to be here to help you. I'm leaving people behind. I am actually a resident of the greater Tampa Bay region now for probably the next 45 to 60 days, just like I was when we had Hurricane Ian hit Fort Myers. I was there for 77 days. If it takes 77 or it takes 97, I'll be here, and I'm not going to leave until we get the job done. So Chairman, thank you for your opportunity to speak, and I, I could take maybe one question before the guy behind me pulls me and says, "We got to go."
Okay, we'll do that. I just want to personally, I want to thank you for your time, for your commitment, for your, for the update, and particularly for your candor and shooting straight with us. It's very much appreciated. Commissioner Wustel, did you want to ask, since you got your question?
I can say it as you walk away. I was the Commissioner, very involved in the university area community that you referenced, spoke about Cinnamon Cove along with staff, and I'm deeply appreciative that you got so fast on that shelter. They deserved it, and they needed it, and I'm very grateful to that. Thank you.
Thank you again, sir.
Thank you.
Bonnie, you want to make some additional comments?
Thank you. But as we go into the next item, okay.
Commissioner Wustel, do you want to make any other comments now? Okay, commiserate count.
I'll wait till the next item.
All right.
Okay. So what I was going to say before, so exactly three weeks ago, we sat in these chambers and heard a presentation about the devastating impacts of Hurricane Helene. Little did we know that just three weeks later, we would be here again to provide an update on another hurricane that has profoundly affected our county. You just heard from our state emergency management partner, and you'll soon hear from our staff, but I did want to take a moment to reflect on the magnitude of this event and the incredible teamwork that has emerged in the response. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to our dedicated county employees. Approximately 4,100 employees were activated in various capacities, contributing over 256,000 hours of service, and this is just for a two-week period ending October 19th. Their unwavering commitment, resilience, and tireless efforts have been nothing short of extraordinary. Each individual played a crucial role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our residences, businesses, and visitors. Their hard work during such a challenging time has not gone unnoticed, and I am truly proud to work alongside such dedicated staff. I also want to acknowledge the board for your steadfast support and involvement throughout this ordeal. Your leadership has provided us with the guidance and resources necessary to respond effectively to this crisis. Moreover, we must recognize the many partners who joined us in this effort, from state agencies, local elected officials, constitutional officers, big shout-out especially to the sheriff's office, municipalities, local organizations, really too many to mention. The collaboration we experienced during Hurricane Milton exemplifies the power of teamwork and cooperation. Each partner brought unique strengths to the table, enhancing our response and ensuring we were able to serve our community effectively. Together, we have demonstrated that working in unison is essential for success. As we review the events and our response, let us keep in mind the real impact of our work. We have not only managed immediate challenges, but have also laid the groundwork for recovery. There is much to be done and analyzed, but the stories of resilience and hope from our community members reflect the heart of what we do, reminding us of why we serve. Now let's move forward with the presentation and share the details and the steps ahead in our recovery efforts. Thank you. And with that, we can go to Item C1. We're going to have here Chief Dougherty, Director Tim Dudley, and we have We're going to have here Chief Dougherty, Director Tim Dudley, and we have various other staff members here if the board has any questions.
Good morning, Chief.
Good morning. Thank you, Ms. Wise. Jason Dougherty, Hillsborough County Fire Chief. I was going to say a lot of the same thank you, so I won't take up more of your time by saying that, but I do want to speak directly to the commissioners and a few others before I introduce Tim to the podium. So first of all, commissioners, thank you for being in the trenches with us over the past few weeks, past month basically, as we've dealt with these storms. Every one of you have been in close contact with us, representing your constituents, representing your districts, and making sure they get taken care of to the best of our ability. We know that your passion and your pride for the community obviously shared throughout this process. So thank you for being in there with us and as we go to the road of recovery. I also want to thank our county administration, specifically Ms. Wise and Mr. Hordell. I can tell you that the commitment from the county leadership is unprecedented. It's something I've never seen in my 25 years of the fire service. Ms. Wise sat with me for, I think, eight days, 24 hours a day. I'd say seven days a week, but it was eight days a week. She did not return to her home during that time the county was facing challenges, along with Mr. Hordell. So the commitment from our leadership is, I can tell you, as a fire chief and working with Tim with emergency management over top of emergency management, the commitment is unbelievable. So thank you personally for that. Also want to, a special thank you to all our ACAs and all our directors. Every one of them were instrumental in what we've done over the last month, and they continue to be instrumental in moving forward. A special thank you to our OEM director, Tim Dudley and his team. Those folks have been working day in and day out for the past month. I would say 12-hour days, but 12-hour days really don't exist right now for us. You know, the EOC's been activated for 24 hours at a time. Those folks are getting very little sleep. Their commitment to the county, commitment to all of you, the commitment to our citizens is unbelievable. So thank you to all of them as well. With that, I also want to say a special thank you to the sheriff's office, Chad Croninger and his team. They've been unbelievable partners of responding to these disasters we've had over the past month. And also remind everybody, we had a Hurricane Debbie as well prior to this. So we've actually had three hurricanes in about a two-month timeframe. And two of those hurricanes, Helene and Milton, being the most devastating hurricanes that impacted Tampa Bay area. So going to what Director Guthrie said, you know, we're in for the long haul. It's going to be a long process, but we're going to get all our folks back on their feet. I also want to thank my command staff and the men and women of Hillsborough County Fire Rescue for the outstanding job they did. They'll share later in the presentation, but I think over 1,000 lives were saved during a total of about 2,000 lives over the two storms. Also, want to thank all the multiple elected officials that worked with us throughout the storms and continue to work with us. And also thanks to Hillsborough County Schools for helping partner with us with the shelters, and also TECO, who had unprecedented number of folks that did not have power and within a week were able to get most everybody back online. I also want to speak to the residents of Hillsborough County. We stand with you. I personally could not be more sorry for the folks that were affected, that were displaced for the storm. I've met a lot of those individuals through going to communities, and my heart breaks for all of them and their families. And I can assure you that as the Hillsborough County Fire Chief and also working with emergency management, we will be with you to the road of recovery. We'll be here with you along the way. As I said, we've had two of the most devastating hurricanes that hit the area, and so we know the recovery, the road's going to be long, but we're going to be with you every step of the way. I want to share a personal experience I had just this past Monday, going out to one of our communities. I ran across an elderly lady, probably in her 70s, and I asked her, ma'am, do you need anything? And she said, no, sir, I'm good. And I said, is there anything we can do for you? She said, no, sir. And I said, do you have water or food? She said, no, sir. And I said, I think you probably need a lot of food. And she says, well, I don't have any. And I said, we're going to get that for you. And she started crying and trembling. It was heartbreaking to say the least. But with that, I asked her, you know, how long have you been out of food? She said, probably three or four days. And this was a lady that never accessed 911, never called the system, but we still have those folks out there. So I'd encourage anybody that sees this, is watching this, call the local resources. We've been working with all our departments to try to get that information out there, but the very least, call 911. We'll make sure our folks get out to you and check on you and take care of your well-being. That particular community, we dropped off six pallets of food and water that day, and we got them on their way to recovery as well. Lastly, I'll leave you with this. While the EOC was fully activated, we celebrated birthdays and weddings, but we also unfortunately grieved some deaths in the families of folks that were at the EOC. We had one employee who has over 36 years of service with Hillsborough County. Her son was placed into hospice during the storm. With the support of her son, her dying son, and her family, she continued to come to work every day during the storm. I'm sad to report, her son passed away this morning, but I remain humbled on how much this employee, her son, her and family love this community. I'll just say we have many employees like that that continue to work for Hillsborough County to represent all of you and represent our citizens. I also want to say a special thank you to 20 of my Hillsborough County firefighters who were working during the storm, and I know a lot of the community was devastated, but these folks were at work while they lost their homes. I had 20 folks lose their homes, and I'm standing with them, just like I'll stand with the community, and getting everybody back on their feet. I want to thank Tim Pearson as well and the union for helping getting these folks, their houses cleaned up and getting them to some type of livable condition or getting them to a place where they could live temporarily. And I'm going to leave you with this quote from David Goggins. If you know David Goggins, he was a Navy SEAL. "Resilience is a choice. It's choosing to rise above your circumstances, no matter how difficult, and become the person you are meant to be." I can tell you as a leader, as a county, and as a community, I believe we are the epitome of resilience. So thank you all. Thank you for your support. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dudley for the presentation.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Chair, board members, county administrator, and Director Guthrie, thank you all for providing me this opportunity to take a pause in the mission and had to pull everybody off the mission to come up here, but we're all anxious to get back, to continue the work. Just as Chief said, it's a slew of people we need to thank, but I especially want to thank the community for being so resilient and recognizing the folks that spoke here today and the folks that can't be in this room today. We know you there, we hear you, and we're going to continue the response and recovery efforts. Joining me today is the Deputy Administrator, Greg Hordell, Kim Byers, and Damon Trummel that will take any questions about debris collection and disposal, Josh Bellotti, stormwater and flooding, George Cassidy, water, wastewater systems, Cheryl Howe, temporary housing, and neighborhood canvassing. And I also have my planning chief, CK Moore, and Katia Miller, my operations chief, representing the 300 folks that are still in the EOC continuing the mission while we take this pause for an update. As the county administrator mentioned, that it was three weeks ago that I was before you giving you an update on Hurricane Helene. And two and a half months ago, we've been rebounded as a community from Hurricane Debbie. Debbie left us with up to 12 inches of rain, maximum rain. We seen 12.5 inches in Sun City. Helene left us with 7.2 feet of surge, record surge, record flooding on the Alafi River at US 301, 9.2 feet, and additional five inches of rain. So now we have Milton. Milton, we prepared for 10 to 15 feet of surge, and we end up with isolated rain impacts up to 18.82 inches seen in West Chase. This caused multiple flooding for the Hillsborough River around Morse Bridge Road, which came in at 38.16 feet. The old record was 34.7 feet. Hillsborough County River at State Park came in at 17.14 feet, beating the record for 17.1 feet. The average rainfall around 15 October is usually 44.64 inches for the Tampa Bay area. At the 15th of October 2024, we're at 77.4 inches of rain here in the Tampa Bay area. Annually, we normally average 49.48 inches, 48 inches. This estimated rainfall total for Hillsborough County is 155 billion gallons represented that has fallen in this short period of time. Hurricane Milton, we dodged another one here. The past three storms, from Debbie to Helene to Milton, we had another shift as the storm shifted south, preventing us from taking another storm event, surge-impact event we were expecting and prepared for 10 to 15 feet. This called for the county administrator to call for a mandatory evacuation A through B to include mobile and manufactured home in all low-lying areas. The county is still currently operated under two local states of emergency, Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton, and we're still going through the recovery efforts for Debbie. Upon tracking Hurricane Milton, the state gave the order to recover all state resources and put them in a safe place so that we can go right back out and pick up and begin the response and recovery effort for now Helene and Milton. The staff jumped into action and prepared our fueling sites for a hard-hitting event for surge because we know our ports are in the surge zones, and we prepositioned fuel assets throughout the county to ensure county teams, push teams, and rapid-response teams can go out and do their jobs and not have to worry about fuel replenishment. We issued multiple watches and warnings and alerts throughout. We opened up 16 shelters to ensure that we can cover and make sure that everybody had a safe place to be. We distributed over 200,000 sandbags throughout the county. We also received assistance from the National Guard, along with our county teams and contractors, to continue the efforts for picking up debris as long as we could, while we could, before the impacts came in. So we were able to do 18,000 cubic yards of help from Helene curbside debris, equivalent over 9,000 pickup trucks, and 6,300 customers delivered 6,200 tons of debris to county drop-off sites. HCFR secured new high-water rescue vehicles. We saw during Helene that we didn't want to have to wait on resources to be moved in the area. The sheriffs had these new SHIRP vehicles that were outstanding with saving at least 1,000 folks across the emergency responders. So thank the administration for allowing us to get those high-water vehicles in place before we had to respond. And teams secured 115 diesel pumps and 22 pump trucks in response as well. So we've seen significant flooding, and we've heard about the flooding, historical flooding that we've seen throughout the county. Helene presented us with challenges along our entire coastal community, as well as into the city of Tampa as well. So now we have inland flooding Milton has brought throughout the county, and we've taken a look at over 9,000 damaged structures and still counting. Community impacts, we saw over 500,000 power outages, sheltered over 14,000 citizens in our emergency shelters. And sadly, we report as of this morning, we just got two updates, we're now up to six deaths related to Hurricane Milton. Debris impacts, the county has deployed considerable resources and collected an estimated 5 million cubic yards of debris from Helene and Milton combined. The public work staffs are working seven days a week, as mentioned by Director Guthrie, as ordered by the state. We have four major haulers working throughout the county with 150 units operating daily. We have over 492,000 cubic yards waste and construction debris collected. That's 60,000 cubic yards of collected debris daily. The goal is to complete the first pass by 16 November. Director Guthrie told you, we're in that marathon phase. This is not going to happen overnight, but the team is working hard, and as he mentioned, we're ahead of the game, and we're going to continue to keep that pace as long as we can. For 90 days, the target is to complete within 90 days by January 7th, by continuing to work with our partners and our vendors as well. Helene and Milton equals 8.7 years' average annual yard waste being collected in 90 days. Our total debris collected is equivalent to a line of fully-loaded dump trucks nose-to-tail from Tampa to St. Augustine, which is equivalent to 194 miles. So we have extensive debris spread throughout the county. We've recognized that we have experienced significant flooding throughout the county. Teams are continuously out there working to mitigate where we can. As I mentioned, the numbers here, the county has been saturated for months, and the lakes have reached their capacity, but we're seeing the light. They're beginning to recede, but as we come across these communities, as the fire chief has mentioned, we're putting resources in place to address the unmet needs and any life safety while we go about restoring the infrastructure. We've deployed an additional 30 pumps to continue to lower the water, and that's to complement the 38 pumps that are currently working right now. So we saw significant areas, and we heard from folks about the Duck Pond, the Town and Country, also Shangri-La, and we have our eye on other neighborhoods that's retaining water as well. So we're looking every day, looking for solutions that's not standard to get that water moved out the way. We ask that you be patient, but if you find yourself in a situation where you're unsafe, please contact us so that we can provide those resources. We partnered with the National Guard, and we used the new platform provided by the state where we do a mobile pod, where we took the resources, high-water vehicles in the East Tampa, the University Area, Cinnamon Cove, Progress Village, and Sun City. We've also implemented what's known as a pop-up pod. This is not the standard pod where we do thousands, but where we connect with community partners, and we have a smaller package where we insert that package to ensure folks have the commodities they need as we continue to mitigate the effort. Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, along with law enforcement, we continue to do wellness checks if we receive those calls coming in. Flood mitigation actions are currently throughout the county. Targeted messaging continues throughout the county, letting folks know that resources are available. Please contact us. We have personal neighborhood canvassing going on, door-to-door, again, offering folks any resources and pointing them in the right direction for assistance. And we have one-on-one phone calls for self-reports as well. So we saw significant traffic lights out during the impacts with the power outages. 332 signals went dark, 68 with flashing emergency beacons. Also, we've had a number of roads and bridges closures throughout the county, but the team has worked effectively and efficiently to close those and ensure that we have our main thoroughfares open and ensure no communities are cut off where we can't respond for emergencies and they can't get out and take care of themselves. Here you'll see a few images here where we had a few communities that were cut off, couldn't get out, couldn't get in, so we had to go in and make those emergency repairs as well. And we're tracking at least six closed roads that we know that still have significant flooding that we're trying to address throughout the county. Also, drinking water impacts, we had 55 pipeline breaks repaired, 75 service lines repaired, 25 hydrant backflows repaired, and we prepositioned potable water tankers out at the fairgrounds in the event we still had the backfill. The county water tanks contain 40 million gallons of potable water that ensured that we didn't have any uninterrupted services for potable drinking water. Wastewater impacts, we prepositioned 145 portable pumps, 45 portable electric generators across the county, three operating areas. We monitor power outages with our web skater lift stations for real-time storm and preparations once the all-clear was given. Once the all-clear was given, teams went out with a strategic plan to ensure that we can continue moving the pumps that weren't completely destroyed or submerged. And we coordinated with additional vendors, and we also went through Florida Warren and did mutual aid with surrounding counties to bring the system online as quickly as possible. We've seen impacts throughout the county facilities. We have at least 100 and some facilities. We have at least a hundred and some facilities that, that we've seen flood, water damage, roof damage, or exterior building damage. Some will take longer than others to ensure that we bring those back online, but each one of our departments have a continuity of operation plan and prepared to implement those plans as needed to ensure that we can continue to deliver the service. We had over seventy to seventy-five percent of the county without power. That's a significant impact. Two thousand and nineteen, the county has since two thousand and nineteen invested over seventeen million dollars in proven backup power in emergency shelters and critical county facilities. The county generator team and contract vendor expended over four hundred hours responding to backup generator operations to ensure that we can continue the emergency operation, life safety, our nine-one-one centers, and our hospitals throughout our community were online as well as our school district that served as our emergency shelters. In the response, we said that fire rescue, law enforcement teams, over a thousand folks were served. In this particular storm, we did have to suspend rescue call service, too dangerous for responders to respond. But once we were all clear and in preparations for the storm, we had twelve tactical search and rescue teams ready to go, twelve rapid needs assessment teams that span throughout the county and getting that immediate big picture of impact so that we can start implementing our plans. We had twelve water rescue teams, including the four new SERPs that have been invaluable and will continue to serve this community in the years to come, saving lives. Also, our sheltering operations, this is a particular operations that we're very proud of here in Hillsborough County. We had a process, almost fifteen thousand folks that we can put in our shelters, three hundred and twenty-four county employees and partners that helped to stand those shelters and this included our, our special needs and our most vulnerable. These shelters, we thank the school district, the sheriff's office, valued partners ensuring the success of these shelters. These shelters have since been combined and transitioned over into our emergency shelters where casework is being conducted for transitional housing to ensure some of these folks that, hey, we don't want you out on the street, but we're going to try to work with you and find a solution to each individual's needs as far as sheltering. So please don't hesitate to contact us as it refers to sheltering. Our county response was a team, team effort. Emergency transportation with our partners, whether it was through rescue or our continued door-to-door service, is still available for anybody that wants to attend any of the state-provided comfort stations. We have eight positioned throughout the county and the MARC units and the DRCs. All they have to do is contact the county and we assure that transportation is not an issue. Heart is still offering rides as well to any of these resources that are available. Animal rescue teams, fuel support, generator operators, our water teams, our nine-one-one took over thirty thousand calls during this event. Our communications team put out over four hundred and eighty-eight total media placements. We put out mass notification to two-point-five million citizens in Spanish and in English. We did five million in impressions and four hundred, four hundred thousand in engagements and another four-point-six of four million in page reviews. Through recovery, as Director Guthrie mentioned, we currently have for Hillsborough County one DRC, but to supplement that, the state has provided us three MARC units that allow us to move throughout the county to allow everyone throughout the county and throughout the municipalities to get an opportunity to take advantage of these resources. But we do have additional requests and that they are aware of that we would like an additional DRC brought to Hillsborough County. But let's talk about what's happening with that. The DRCs and the MARCs, these are just, this, these are just additional platforms to use. You don't actually have to go there. FEMA encourages individuals to go to disasters census dot gov, download the FEMA app and you can apply online. Our daily applications received are over forty-six hundred. Our cumulative applications are over two hundred and nineteen thousand applicants for Hillsborough County. Individual household programs, twenty-one million in funds issued, housing assistance, over four million issued, and also other needs and assistance, whether it be medical or dental, over sixteen thousand, seven hundred and five thousand dollars issued for Hillsborough County citizens for our FEMA support that's been provided for Hillsborough County. We also encourage folks, if you can't get online, call eight-hundred-six-two-one-three-three-six-two for FEMA assistance on how to apply. We talked about, Director Guthrie talked about the pods, it's normally for seventy-two hours, but the state afforded us opportunity to run for, for a week. We put seven pods on the ground throughout the county and we strategically placed those because we were dealing with unmet needs throughout our coastal community and now inland county. So to ensure everybody had an opportunity. So we had four in the county, two in the city of Tampa, one in Temple Terrace, and then a modified distribution up in Plant City, and we've done over thirteen pop-up pods throughout the county and continue to do so today. Comfort stations, we have eight of those as mentioned, and we also have enhanced those with hot meals, working with our feeding partners throughout the community. Our recovery efforts, also, we continue to do debris collection throughout the county as, again, the state has given us orders to run twenty-four-seven. We have two sites that, that offer twenty-four-seven access and then we have several other sites that have extended hours up to seven PM. Director Guthrie mentioned the twelve oh six. Twelve oh six is important. We have a hundred and eighty-eight days to make sure we build back within compliance and we build back stronger. We've had the initial meetings with the deputy administrator. We've set the follow-on meetings where we'll, we'll also be inclusive of the municipalities and also we'll be submitting resource requests for additional assessors, emergency permitting assistance, and training and education for all the stakeholders who are responsible for ensuring that we meet our twelve oh six guideline as well. It's a lot going on, provided a lot of information and a lot of folks are hurting and impacted by this. Infrastructure-wise, we are able to move throughout our transportation. Our main thoroughfares are looking good and in pretty good standing. Energy-wise, the bulk of the energy is back, but we know we still have pockets that has not been accessible, that we continue to work on for power. Our services and county facilities, we are providing services throughout the county and we'll continue to make those adjustments as needed. Our water systems are in pretty good standing as well as they continue to transition any of those still on emergency power and any other mitigation efforts that they may have to take to ensure we're back to a hundred percent. And our storm, storm system water, systems as well, we continue to order any additional equipment or infrastructure that we need to come up with the solution to move this water. Before I end there, again, I just want to thank everybody and that, again, this is a marathon and we're prepared to continue the efforts to response and recovery to three separate events. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley, for your very thorough presentation and update. That's very much appreciated. Any comments or questions for the A-team behind us here? Commissioner Myers?
I'd just like to personally thank staff, just being out at EOC at P-SOC and what you all did on behalf of all of our citizens, giving up so much of your personal selves to reach out and help others. I cannot thank you enough. It just shows how we are Hillsborough County strong and we're going to get through this. And even just from the report you just shared with us, it's going to take time and I, and I want the community to know, it's going to take us time. We, we're receiving calls as commissioners now in all, and we say, be patient. All of us are hurting at the same time, some of us lost in different capacities, but we're in this together and the staff. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
And again, I'll just say, I know a thousand of our five thousand staff worked twelve-hour days or more during the course of the storm, non-stop, and I'm, you know, it's just been an incredible effort by everyone. I don't even, I, I, I think it's just, I think initially it maybe didn't even dawn on people the, how massive this real disaster was and what was going on. I mean, when Fowler Avenue is closed for four days with standing water, you know, and all these other places and as I said, lights not working, sewer wastewater, water not there, it really brings you back to a level that you understand, people being rescued, three hundred people being rescued in the university area from the water there. It's just amazing, but the, the staff has still months and months and months of really intense work ahead and already the, the effort is just amazing and, and wonderful and all the partners that moved in and as well, just for the, maybe we will have to do a appreciation too for some of the nonprofits that were kind of first responders in all the areas. It, it has just been so widespread and, and so big, but thank you all, thank you all.
Commissioner Wolstall?
Thank you very much. You're all consummate professionals at your job and I'm so thankful that the loss of life that we haven't mentioned yet was so truly minimal in Hillsborough County, far, far less than what it real like, likely would have been if we didn't have trained professionals with the proper equipment to go in and emergency evacuate the unprecedented and unexpected flooding that happened. And I think that those are things that we might take for granted and get lost in the conversation because of the uncomfortableness that followed on the aftermath of the storm. I believe that after you go a long time without experience suffering, that it's easy to forget what it used to be like. Nineteen seventy, Hurricane Celia, Hurricane Three, one hundred and twenty-seven mile-per-hour winds, almost identical to what Milton just did to us, devastated fifty percent of the homes and structures in the wake of Corpus Christi. That's where I'm from. My dad lived through that storm. Eighty percent of the buildings received serious structural damage that still remained after the other fifty percent were wiped off the planet. Four weeks on average without power, mass devastation is what happened in nineteen seventy. That is not what happened fifty-four years later because of the resiliency that's been built into our systems by qualified professionals, the many that are standing behind you. Mr. Guthrie stole the words out of my mouth. It's why I sold my UPS store, but we do live in the age of the Amazon deliveries of next-day service and that is just an unreasonable expectation for the serious amount of recovery efforts that have to go over our eleven hundred square miles, geographically again bigger than seven states, is what this single county government is handling. And you're doing it as a local government, not as a state government, which means you have less resources allotted to you. I'm immensely grateful for those of you, Director Trammell and Bellotti, I mentioned it earlier, but that community in the university area, they desperately needed help and that help was delivered. The homeless services department that canvassed those neighborhoods and made sure that everybody needed help, received the help that they needed. If there's still lingering folks that did not receive the transportation to the shelter that also the county provided, you heard Director Guthrie say earlier, it is being a hundred percent covered wraparound services by the state at all people's park and we will ensure that we go and collect you and deliver you to that site and that you are safe until there is a point that you can get back to your regular living situation. So thank you so much for everything that you did. I will continue to be aggressively scrutinizing the budget administrator-wise, but I am immensely grateful for the professional attitude that this staff approached this catastrophic, what, what could have and should have been a far worse storm event was not because everybody was so well-trained and prepared. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I don't want to belabor the points that have already been made, but my thanks particularly to our county administrator and our staff and also our citizens. You know, it is not an easy thing to evacuate, but people did it and they heeded the warnings and it, it turned out that it was really necessary and a lot of lives were saved because people did what we asked them to do. Later in the, in the discussion, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the flooding when we get to F-four, Commissioner Kemp's item. But you know, one of the things that we're going to have to look at is that there were a lot of people who weren't told to evacuate, who ended up being the victims of flooding. And I think that in the aftermath of this, we're going to have to look very, very closely at, at those areas in particular where the flooding came unexpectedly. Because that is something that if there's any way we can mitigate it in the future, we really need to get working on that now. I know that the Pine Crest neighborhood particularly is one that I've been very focused on, but there are a lot of them throughout Hillsborough County and we need to do our best to figure out what went wrong and to correct it for the future. So again, my, my sincere appreciation to everyone on behalf of our citizens, on behalf of all of us. Everyone worked so hard to make sure that the loss of life was minimal and not to in any way minimize or, or excuse or say anything about the six losses that we did have, but it really could have been so much worse given the gravity of the situation. And we really owe tremendous thanks to our citizens for taking care of each other, for looking out for one another, for looking out for your neighborhoods, and for being there for one another during this unprecedented storm. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Cameron Spado?
Yes, I want to thank everyone. We so appreciate every one of you, just amazing Hillsborough County family of employees we have here. It's just amazing and as Bonnie already mentioned, the collaboration was just amazing from the different departments and organization was just awesome. And I know we learned a lot of things that we need to have for future, if anything, you know, came up in the future, but definitely just really so happy and thankful for all of you, everything that you've done. And I know we got a lot to do, but definitely have a lot of hope and for sure, things will get better. I believe that, so thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
I don't want to repeat everything that's been said, so please don't think of my brevity as not true gratitude, but the level of professionalism and love, like sincere care for each other, not just our employees, for one another, but for the community that we all serve, has really been second to none. It has been an honor to be in there and watch you all do your thing. And, and in the aftermath, I, I know the, the situation that Chief talked about, he was out there with one of my aides and, you know, days later, we're still out there helping and we're going to continue to do that. And I know you all are tired. I think they talked two storms. I think some of you have been activated for, I don't, we lost count of the days and many of you haven't been home and it, the level of appreciation really is remarkable. So thank you all very much. I appreciate each and every one of you.
And in, in closing, I essentially want to echo Commissioner Miller's comments. Don't interpret my brevity as, as being insincere because it most certainly is not. I, I've told countless individuals that I was comforted during the days leading up and immediately after the storms, being at the EOC and seeing all of you there, seeing the county employees working. Some, I remember talking to, to Anthony Collins saying, you know, he'd been up thirty-six hours, you know, working around the clock and that wasn't unusual. And I was just comforted by knowing that not only you were experienced, but you were well-prepared and true public servants and really can't say any better than that, so thank you very much. Bonnie?
Thank you all. You may sit.
And I know you wanted to sit down.
Chair Hagan, the next item is item F-one. This is your item regarding debris removal.
Okay, and I'll be, I'll be brief on this. Again, we've heard that the devastation and severity associated with the back-to-back hurricanes was, you know, unprecedented with the devastation and with the storm surge and flooding that took place, at least in Hillsborough County. and with the storm surge and flooding that took place, at least in Hillsborough County. Again, not to belabor it, but the men and women, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Emergency Management, Sheriff's Office, they did a remarkable job of helping our residents, protecting our residents, and in many situations, saving our residents, and as well as all the administration and county staff, so, can't thank you guys enough. And I know that in the grand scheme of things, compared to devastation, a loss of life, belongings, flooding, loss of electricity for days, being unable to access gas, I know, you know, compared to those things, storm debris pickup is not nearly as important. I understand that. Having experienced, I will say, we need to be patient, and as we heard from earlier, some of these storms in the past have taken a year or two years to fully recover. But I will also tell you that having been in this chair a long time and experienced many of the hurricanes over the years, none of which were nearly this devastating, I know how frustrated our residents feel when they're trying to get back on their feet. Many of them have lost a lot or lost everything, and when the storm debris just remains for weeks and at times months there. Over time, again, I'm just speaking from experience, over time, the frustration turns to anger, and it's a constant reminder of what they experienced, and in many cases, what they lost, including financially. I can't imagine the mental health strain that's associated with this, and I don't want to minimize that. When I left my house Thursday morning at 6:15, couldn't get 100 yards down the road, massive tree had blocked the entire road, couldn't get out that way. I mean, I knew at that point, clearly I knew it was bad, but I knew, I didn't realize the severity of it. And so I immediately put something on the agenda, having gone through this in the past, of basically wanting everyone to know that we understand the issues, and we want to do everything we can to help, because what's happened in the past is that we've either at times did not have enough contractors to complete the work, or at times, what has happened is you've had other jurisdictions pay more and essentially poach some of the workers, contractors, and trucks that we had working here. And so, I obviously did not want that to happen again, and so I added something to the agenda, which essentially, the message was, "All hands on deck." And I was very much comforted by Governor DeSantis and the state's response, their resources, their sense of urgency, in helping us immediately from day one. But, I want our folks to know that we're doing everything that we can. I was thrilled to see the administration immediately bringing on additional haulers. They increased the rates that were being paid, I think, if I'm not mistaken, piggybacking with, on an F.DOT contract in order to do that, in order to ensure that what's happened in the past was not gonna happen this time. I was also very pleased to see that now, that there's a, we can go online, that there's a debris collection map that shows, illustrates a storm debris collection status. It's very helpful. I think it does lack a little specificity, but it's helpful, very much so. And with respect to storm debris, and I also want to say, not just, also with non-storm debris, when you go through certain areas and you'll see a massive pile of storm debris, and right next to it is an enormous pile of their belongings and drywall and things that were destroyed during the flooding, right next to it. I just wanted the administration to know that, to take every action necessary, that we support that, and I know, being at the EOC those days, seeing, you know, Commissioner Miller, seeing Commissioner Wollstill and other commissioners, they were sharing the same concerns. I wanted them to know that, you know, we were willing to authorize whatever was necessary. Very pleased to see the efforts. We are making progress, clearly. It's gonna take a long time. We all know that. We need, we must be patient, but I don't want to take our foot off the pedal. Just yesterday, coincidentally, I was told that a nearby county had raised their prices in an attempt to, not necessarily poach from Hillsborough, but just to get, increase their volume of contractors, and I don't want that to happen at our expense. And a short while afterward, I was contacted by someone else saying, asking if we were still bringing on contractors to help, and I said, "I don't know. I'll find out," but we better be. And so, at this point, Commissioner Wollstill's in the queue. I don't know if any formal action needs to be taken or not, but I do want our folks to know that we understand the severity of the issue, that we are addressing it, and for transparency, I want to be notified. I think the collection map is helpful. I think we can, you know, provide a little more specificity as far as time-wise, but that we're getting regular updates per district, showing us exactly the progress, knowing it's not gonna happen overnight, it's gonna take a while. There should be reasonable expectations, but I think it's important, having gone through this many times in the past, that we show our residents that we understand, and we're taking every possible effort that we can, including, and I know the administration's doing this already, reassigning staff to handle debris and other critical storm-related issues that have arisen. So, I'll open it up for any other board discussion, and if we need to take formal action, we can, but I just, I wanted to, when I pull out of my driveway, I'm like, we're gonna discuss this, and I'm very pleased to see that the action that Bonnie and the administration has taken to date, but I don't want to take the foot off the pedal either. Commissioner Wollstill.
Thank you. You know, you've brought up some good points. My own neighborhood has not been collected, and I'm very thankful for that, because we were not impacted. So, leave our trees and our branches. When my neighbors complain to me, I just show them pictures of what people are going through. Please prioritize, or continue to prioritize their household goods. I already know that you are. That should be your priority, and I'm thankful for that. And I just, in my opinion, everybody else can wait, other than if it's that we need to get power lines up off the road or something like that, then obviously we need to get the trees. But Commissioner Hagan brought up a different good point. I'm gonna wait for after all of this to settle, and everybody should know by now, I have a memory like an elephant, so, I am gonna be looking into our debris hauler contracts, and I will be, I hope that the whispering that I'm being told is that our residents approved contracts through a bidding process are not being ignored or superseded by them wanting to go and chase money elsewhere. If that is what's happening to be happening, I'm gonna be looking into that, and how successful they may or may not be in the future bidding of Hillsborough County Government and serving our residents. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Miller.
I just had a question. On your item, it says like per district. Is that our county districts? Because if you look at the map, it has zones, so if somebody could just clarify that for me, I would appreciate it, meaning how it's reported.
Yeah, I know, it's confusing, and it'll show areas and zones, and I just wanted staff to report to us, because at times they'll say, "We've collected X amount," but don't know where that's from, so I'd like that to be broken down into per single-member district. Just...
That's correct. That's what I'm asking, but the map is done by zones.
At the same time, understand, Commissioner Wollstill makes an excellent point, and it's my understanding that that's the process that the haulers are following, is that the areas that obviously hit hardest, ones that are the most dense, those are the areas that are being prioritized, so not minimizing that, but I do think it's important that we show that we're covering the areas that need it the most. So, that was my intent.
Bonnie?
Thank you, and I think you put this on the agenda right away, and we did delay the meeting, and you were able to see that we were taking those steps necessary, and so I think that's...
No, that's a good point. If the meeting would have been regularly scheduled, perhaps there'd be a different tone, or, you know, remarks would be, you know, different, but with the additional time, obviously, there's been significant improvement, and I'm very pleased with that. This is not meant to be a criticism, it's just our folks need to know that we're doing everything that we can.
Right, and as you all mentioned, you know, we're gonna take the most dangerous, the major thoroughfares first, the household goods first, in doing those things in a safe manner.
Yeah, and at the time, in the time candidly, the first thing that was on my mind was storm debris, not recognizing or realizing the flooding severity in every district. I mean, probably worse in District 4, but throughout the county, that, and that's when you see the massive piles of drywall and lost furniture and just things that have lost, and to the extent that it remains over a period of time, that just manifests itself in the psyche, and it just, that's not healthy, and that stuff's gotta get, you know, gotta get removed, and it is. So, I thank you for that. I do have one other thing. I'm gonna wait regarding debris drop-off in light of Commissioner Wollstill's item. It may or may not be the exact same thing that he's bringing up, but I'm gonna hold off, so I may bring up another issue at that time when we deal with that, but this is an FYI. Okay, I don't see any other, anyone else in the queue? Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Chair. I'm still not sure of my answer. My specific question is, the map shows zones and not districts. How will that information be reported to us? Via the zone or by district?
Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Horwitz, Deputy County Administrator. I'm sure we can accommodate both. We'll report both by trash collection district and by commissioner district. I don't see that as an overwhelming problem. So, we'll give you the information, and whatever questions you have, of course, please feel free to reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Wollstill.
Could we just say, where's the map at? I haven't seen the map. Is it on the HCFL? I didn't, couldn't find it.
Well, the one map, it's, well, here, you have to put on, it's highlighted, Hillsborough County's debris collection map, but I'm unaware of the, oh, HCFL.gov/Miltoncleanup. Is that correct?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And we'll be sure to get that out, so everybody could, yes, thank you.
Okay. Next item.
Next item is item F3. This is Commissioner Myers' item regarding the Tampa Electric Company response to Hurricane Milton.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd ask President of TECO, Artic Collins, to come before us and give us an update and report of the power outage regarding TECO and our community. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, and good morning, administrator-wise. I was asked to appear here this morning to provide an overview of TECO's Hurricane Milton power restoration effort, and on behalf of the 2,550 TECO employees that I lead, who all worked tirelessly to restore power, I'm very happy to do so. I would like to acknowledge that it only has been a few days since the last of our customers was restored, and in fact, as previously noted, I think by Mr. Dudley, some of our customers still don't have power if they're living in areas that are still subject to flooding, or if they received storm surge damage as a result of Helene, or just tree damage as a result of both Helene and Milton. And we continue to work closely with those customers to try to figure out how we can get them restored with power just as quickly as possible. Just a couple of data points that I wanted to share, just to provide context to my overview. First of all, Tampa Electric supplies power to 853,000 customers. The bulk of those reside in Hillsborough County. Our electrical grid is really made up of, in very simple terms, it consists of four discrete pieces that are obviously interconnected. Power plants that produce electricity, a transmission grid, which is the backbone of our electricity grid that delivers the power from the power plants, or from solar farms, two substations, which is the third piece of our infrastructure. Substations serve the role of reducing the pressure of electricity. They reduce the voltage from high voltage to lower voltage, and then that lower voltage electricity flows on the distribution grid, which is what everybody sees in their neighborhoods. Our transmission network, which again is the backbone of our grid, is 1,360 miles in length, and most of that is above ground, very little of it is below ground, and that's because it's so cost prohibitive to place transmission underground. It consists of 25,000 poles. 23,000 of those poles are either steel or concrete. It's a very, very strong transmission grid. The remaining 2,000 poles that constitute our transmission network are wood, and over the next five years, our plan is to replace all those. We've been slowly chipping away at this, and ultimately, we plan to have every bit of our transmission network to be made of either steel or concrete. We have 12,610 miles of distribution, so our distribution system is much larger than the backbone, the transmission system. 12,610 miles, and again, those are the poles that you see in every community that are carrying power into residents' homes. Our distribution grid, so that, of those 12,610 miles, our distribution grid is 52% underground. Very large portion of our distribution grid is underground relative to most other utilities. So, we've got 6,475 miles of our distribution currently sits underground. On an annual basis, as we interconnect new residences, new customers, new communities, we pretty much put everything underground. And then on top of that, we take about 100 miles of existing overhead infrastructure on an annual basis, and we move that underground. All to say, as each year goes by, that 52% of our distribution network that's underground is slowly increasing. So, I just wanted to, I just wanted to kind of provide that context, because it just tells you a little bit about the design and the overall resilience of the grid that serves our 853,000 customers. So, how did we prepare for Milton, and what exactly did we plan for? As everybody here knows, Milton spun up very quickly. We really had about 96 hours notice between the time that we were given the first indication that what was known as Disturbance 38 appeared as though it was something that could make landfall on the western coast of Florida. And because it formed so quickly on the heels of Helene, it actually made planning for Milton a bit more challenging than normal, and that's partly because all of the mutual aid resources, all of the linemen that we would normally just call upon to support restoration in Florida, were fully committed with Helene restoration up in the Carolinas, Tennessee, and Georgia. We even had resources up there. We had about 150 of our line workers up in Georgia because we had dealt with Helene so quickly. And of course, many of our residents were still reeling with the storm surge associated with Helene. In fact, on the morning that we got the first indication that Disturbance 38 could turn into something more substantial, I was down in Regency Cove, down by Gandy, dealing with a manufactured home area that had been completely inundated because of Helene, and we were trying to figure out how to safely bring those customers back online. We are required, as an electric utility, we are required to figure out what any storm's impact will be, and therefore, what resources are required, days ahead of time. And the reason for that is because the resources that we're calling upon are traveling great distances to get here, and in order to have them here in time, you have to start rolling them well before a storm makes landfall. And because weather forecasts change every few hours, the certainty of the damage estimates, the certainty of the resources that you need is very challenging. Now, all that said, when it comes to hurricane preparation, a utility like Tampa Electric, operating in a geography like Tampa in Florida, the 16th largest economy in the world if it was its own country, we can't ever... it was its own country, we can't ever afford to be wrong. And so, we can never afford to find ourselves in a circumstance where we underestimated what the impact and the damage associated with a hurricane would be. And so, we're always very, very careful with this. So based upon the analysis that we performed 72 hours out, we determined that we felt we were going to get hit with a Category 3 hurricane. And we estimated that we would experience 615,000 customers that would lose power, and that it would necessitate 6,000 resources if we were going to execute a seven-day restoration. And I'm going to tell you that when the team first brought all that information to me, I scoffed and said, "We have never assembled 6,000 linemen to support a restoration before." The most we have ever assembled before was 3,500. So this seems... You know, I don't know how we're going to be able to manage that number of resources efficiently and safely on our grid. But I ultimately trusted the modeling, and we set about to actually marshal the 6,000 resources that we ended up bringing in from across 20 different states and from Canada. We had resources come all the way down from Canada. We made plans, if you're bringing in 6,000 workers, we made plans to set up eight base camps. And you would have seen those camps out in Plant City, at the Fairgrounds, at Raymond James, Wyomama Church of God, Legoland. We had them littered all across our service territory. And it is from these base camps, these are self-sufficient villages, that we set up in a 24-hour period. And from those locations, we house the linemen, we feed the linemen, we offer them shower facilities, we launder their clothes, we fuel their vehicles, we supply them with the materials they need to do the work that's assigned to them each day. And because we set these communities up, what we're really doing is we're keeping the hotel rooms that we would otherwise occupy, we're keeping those available for residents who are being told to evacuate from the A and B zones. That's why we set up these base camps. In addition to that, we would have embedded Tampa Electric employees in all of the EOCs that were activated prior to the storm. There were seven of them that were activated, including Hillsborough County EOC. And we also would have embedded TECO employees right in the state EOC as well with Executive Director Guthrie. The Hillsborough County EOC was staffed continuously. I think we had a team of five or six employees that were rolling in and out of there. I know one employee at least that was there for five consecutive days and never left, interacting with the Hillsborough County team, trying to make sure that whatever they needed from TECO, they were getting. And as I understand it, the Hillsborough County EOC continues to be active, and TECO continues to be an active participant to support the flooding issues and the debris clearing. One final point on all of the things we did to prepare. As soon as we could see that Milton was going to be something substantial, I immediately would have reached out to Administrator Wise. I reached out to Van Ayers with the school system, and began regular contact that I maintained throughout to ensure that information was flowing seamlessly. So, that's what we prepared for. What happened? What was the impact? So as everybody knows, Milton made landfall 30 miles to our south on October 9th as a Category 3 hurricane. Hillsborough County experienced sustained hurricane-force winds, wind gusts of over 100 miles an hour. As it turned out, with the design of Milton, the strongest winds and the heaviest rains were contained in the northern I-Wall. So while the southern landfall meant that we avoided the dreaded storm surge, it actually meant that we got the strongest winds and the heaviest rain. In addition to that, we experienced at least four embedded tornadoes that caused significant damage to our infrastructure. That's what's been reported by the National Hurricane Center. Based upon our observation, we think there were more than four tornadoes that went through our service territory. As has already been mentioned by Mr. Dudley, we experienced excessive rain, up to 18 inches of rain. The problem with rain, from an electricity perspective, is it softens the ground, makes it much easier for strong winds to just uproot entire trees. And of course, it also means that the rains bring latent flooding, which we're continuing to deal with. Even as, as it has already been mentioned, I mean, as recently as last Friday, a week after landfall, we were having to proactively cut off power to the Shangri-La District in Plant City because of flooding in that area. And we've been working since then to do everything we can to bring in power overhead or anything to sort of minimize the number of customers in that community that are without power. In summary, Milton, as it's turned out, was the strongest hurricane to hit Hillsborough County in over 100 years. What was the resulting damage to electrical infrastructure? 595,000 customers were without power at the peak, which was last Thursday morning, following the storm. In addition to losing that many customers losing power, we also lost much of our major transmission, which as I said, is the backbone that brings the power from the power stations into the communities. And this was not just a Hillsborough County or a TECO issue. Across the state, there were actually 78 individual transmission lines of 115,000 volts or higher that were lost. And again, which is a testament to the power of Milton. We had 1,300 distribution poles that were damaged, half of our distribution circuits were locked out. From a good news perspective, we didn't have any damage to our generating assets, which is very good. But I will say, we did have several of our solar assets suffered significant damage that we are now trying to recover from. So, now on the Thursday morning, October 10th, we have 595,000 customers without power. What is the restoration process? And for us, the restoration process is really, it starts with, on day one, you crawl out of the foxhole, we send out our resources, and we're doing damage assessment. We're doing triage, trying to understand how best, how most efficiently, we're going to deploy all of these out-of-state resources that we've brought in. That's the first thing. We work with critical customers like the port, the hospitals, assisted living facilities, Tampa International Airport, to try to make sure that they have the power that they need. There's a big focus on day one on public safety. We're very concerned, very concerned in the aftermath of a hurricane like Milton, that we have energized wire down on the ground, and that people are going to come out of their homes and try to clean up their yard and move a wire that's actually energized. So we get everybody out there as quickly as possible to try to understand, do we have anything energized and get it de-energized? That's a big focus for day one as well. And of course, we were setting up those base camps on day one as well. Day two, which is now into Friday, on day one, we realized we had all this transmission damage. Day two was really dedicated to transmission. And the problem with working on transmission is transmission lines tend to run out of sight. They're in corridors and forests where you actually can't really see them. And that created, I will tell you, and you all know this, it created a bit of unease in those early days of customers saying, "Where are all of the linemen that you promised were here?" And they were all working out of sight in the backwoods trying to restore the transmission for us. It really wasn't until day three, Saturday morning, that we really began to flood all of our residential communities with those 6,000 resources. So as we're working through that process of, you know, damage assessment, public safety, critical infrastructure, and then beginning that process of fanning out into the residential communities, in parallel with that, we're also working closely with our community partners on things like lift stations and drinking water facilities, making sure that power is maintained to all of those. We have a list of priority assets that we review with the city and the counties on an annual basis to make sure that we have the most up-to-date list of the assets that are considered most critical, and we work from that. Once we get into the communities and we're working at the distribution level, we don't do it by zip code, we don't do it by who hollers the loudest. What we really do is we break it, we have 800 circuits. Each circuit is really a string of wire that has about 1,000 customers on it, in very simple terms. And we assess each one of them to make an assessment of which of these circuits can we bring back the fastest, energize the most customers for the least amount of repair work. We put it in a prioritized list, and we just start working down the list. It's really just as simple as that. Because our goal is to get power restored just as quickly as we possibly can. An obvious question that you might ask is, you know, that sounds like a very thoughtful restoration, but can you please explain to me, why did you lose 595,000 customers in the first place? If you have a grid that has so many steel and concrete poles for your transmission backbone, and if you have a distribution grid that's 52% underground, how could you have lost 595,000 customers? And why did 1,300 poles fail? You know, is it a reflection of the current state of the electric grid? And I just want to assure the Commission that the answer to that question is an emphatic no. It's not a reflection of the electric grid. Our grid didn't fail because of high winds, excessive rain, or flooding. Our poles didn't fail because of high winds, excessive rain, or flooding. What failed were the trees. What failed were the trees, you know, the beautiful oak trees that paint our skyline were just no match for the winds. And when they fell, and many of them fell from outside the right-of-way, these are trees we don't even trim. They're trees that are set 50 feet back, and when they fall and they uproot and they land on transmission or distribution, they're taking everything down. Anything that's overhead is going to come down. There isn't a pole or a wire that can withstand the weight of those big oak trees. And so, you know, the tree trimming, we spend $30 million a year on tree trimming in our corridors. And that, you know, that work pays a great dividend in lesser storms, but in a big storm like Milton, it really exposed, we're going to have to do more to really understand if we need to do more tree cutting versus tree trimming. The restoration was completed in six days. In the end, we replaced 170 miles of conductor, 1,300 poles, 16,000 fuses. I'm really pleased to say that for all the work that we did, we only had one minor injury of an employee, including those 6,000 workers from out of state. We had one employee who needed stitches in their leg because they rubbed up against something, and we had no public safety incidents through the entire time, which we're really happy with. We will now go through a detailed lessons-learned exercise. We do that after every hurricane, whether that's Debbie, or whether that's Helene and Milton now. This one, we're going to do a little bit more exhaustively. We're going to actually engage with Hillsborough County, City of Tampa, Plant City, Oldsmar, Temple Terrace, and we're going to really try to understand what feedback they want to provide to us to improve our processes for the next hurricane. I would just say in closing that the team is very proud of what we did to restore power so quickly, safely. And I realize it doesn't feel quick when you're without power. But considering the damage and the working conditions, this restoration was completed much quicker and much more efficiently than most other states would be able to undertake. Are there things we could have done better? Definitely. There always is. Power restoration in the aftermath of a hurricane is really trying to restore order amidst chaos. And so, it's inherently messy. And the lessons-learned exercise that we go through, I am confident will unearth opportunities for us to improve. I just want to close by expressing my gratitude for the patience and the understanding of our customers, many of whom have suffered significant loss and continue, as I stated earlier, continue to not have power. Their homes are damaged, they're dealing with flooding. I also want to express my gratitude for all the out-of-state linemen who came in to help support this restoration, for the collaboration with community partners like the Hillsborough County team. And finally, I just want to express my appreciation and deep respect for the employees of TECO who worked so tirelessly during consecutive hurricanes to restore power as quickly and as safely as possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments and presentation. Commissioner Myers, do you want to make any comments right now?
Thank you so much, Archie, for coming. I'd just like for you to repeat day two, because on Friday, that's when everyone in the communities was looking for TECO, and you all had your own transmissions that you all was working on. So the community did not see TECO, but those are the calls that I was receiving. Where's the TECO truck in my... Because they think you're going to be out during that time. And then also, with the port, I know you mentioned the Port Authority, will they be that critical as hospitals going forward to be able, where everyone can get gas, that we can get the power up at the port immediately, right afterwards? So that's critical to the infrastructure as well.
I fully agree with that. The port is one of the critical customers. I think I may have failed to call them out, and we did work on Thursday and Friday to get power restored, not to the entire port, but to the five fuel terminals, Buckeye, Sitco, Transmontane. I don't remember the five of them, but we're now working with the port to try to understand, what can we do collaboratively with the port to ensure that the next time, heaven forbid there's a next time, but the next time, that it doesn't take us a day and a half to ultimately get power restored at the port.
Okay. And last, I'd like to thank Joe Brown. I think Joel is in the boardroom. And Jimmy Adcock, I work constantly with them on different issues. We have one more to resolve in Tenota Sasser. And Joel went beyond the call of duty on yesterday, I see him raising his hand in the back, to help a healthcare facility on MLK, to make sure, there were some issues with Spectrum, they kept sending... And he went there personally to talk with them and made the connection with Spectrum. And we're all in this together, and that's what it takes, some time for just to show up and talk with the customer, to let them know, we're doing everything we can to get your power on and to work with TECO at Spectrum, so they can get their internet back up and all. And I was promised it should be back up this morning from that case. So thank you so much for coming and appearing before the Board of County Commissioners.
Commissioner Russell?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that you have a couple of employees that probably deserve a reimbursement for their payroll because they were acting like my own employees, and I'm deeply appreciative of that. They were ultra-responsive and took the issues that I was bringing to them very seriously. I'll get some negative out of the way. I saw some members of the community threatening linemen, threatening to shoot them. Absolutely unacceptable. Everybody needs to take a breath. You know, everyone's working as hard as they can to restore some sense of normalcy to their lives, and we shouldn't be threatening the lives of the people that are working so hard to get our lives back in order. So I do hope, though, that in this, I believe that you guys were exceptional. I brought up Hurricane Celia earlier. I don't know if you were in the room yet, but I was talking to my dad a lot about this. I grew up in Corpus Christi, and, you know, this was the exact same storm almost, except for that we were the unlucky ones. And the resiliency of bringing back power in such a record time, in my opinion, is something that should not be glazed over. I believe that eight years or so ago, I can't remember which storm, power was down. I know at least in Duke, for 10 to 12 days, over in Pinellas County, and you guys were able to get the majority of it back. And I think that another thing that needs to be highlighted is, I remember a study that happened for the City of Tampa several years ago, and they beat every single city in the state of Florida for their tree canopy. And I think that that's an extremely important variable, that we like our tree canopy. But I was driving down, leaving Cinnamon Cove, I think maybe West 102nd Avenue, somewhere over there, and the GPS still said green to go down there, but it had to be a 100-year oak tree that was lying directly on your transformer, completely blocking the road. And those are not things that can be fixed overnight. Those are not things, you can't go onto people's private property, which is where the tree was, and start cutting down everyone's tree that may impact your electricity assets, that may negatively impact their lives in the event of a storm, but it is their tree and was fully on their property. And that's just one example. And I'm just very grateful for your staff that was so super-responsive to me. I'm really appreciative of it. And finally, I would just say that I think that it's an intelligent thing that you, as a businessman, are doing in terms of looking into solar. I know that you guys believe that a carbon credit is likely imminent at some point, but everybody that believes in solar should go and Google Duke Energy's Lake Placid Solar Farm. And... Solar Farm and see how absolutely unresilient solar fields are in natural disasters. I think that that should be the headline of anybody who is opining and advocating for solar energy, that that is a testament, that that is not your answer if you live in an area that is going to have severe inclement weather. And I think that that's a very important thing for our community to take into account as our farmers move out of the area and are releasing their land for these solar farms. I think that that's something that we should take serious consideration, thinking about resilience of our energy in Hillsborough County moving forward. So thank you so much to your team and all of the energy and exhaustive efforts that you put in. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, Archie, I ran into you in the middle of the street after Helene. I know that you were personally out there assessing the situation. I was constantly texting with Jimmy and Joel through the crisis, so I very much appreciate everything that you did, and I recognize what a tremendous effort TECO made watching all those trucks, caravanning in after Milton on I-4 was really something to behold. But I do want to pick up on something Commissioner Wustel said about our tree canopy. You know, the City of Tampa aggressively protects its trees. Hillsborough County aggressively protects its trees. We love our trees, and they're a really, really important part of the character of our community. And it sounds like trees really are a big part of the issue. So I hope that when you do your postmortem, you will look more into the undergrounding of some of the utilities. I know it's expensive. I know it is, you used the word cost prohibitive. I hope, I hope it's not quite that, but it does seem like that is the one thing that can be done that really will guard against the trees falling and taking out the lines. And since, because of air quality and stormwater and aesthetics, tree removal is really not something that the community wants to contemplate, I really do think we have to go back and look again and see what we can do to underground, particularly in the certain areas that we know are very vulnerable. So I hope that will be part of your assessment. Other than that, I do again want to thank everyone for how hard they worked. There were so many people out in the streets working to restore the power, and as frustrating as it is to be without it, I know that after four or five days, at least most of the community had their power back. So thank you for that, and let's make sure that we continue to look into doing everything we possibly can to become more resilient in the future.
Commissioner Kemp.
Yes, and I'll just echo some of what I've heard. I know I've, you know, spent a lot of time talking to TECO over the years and have back and forth, but I'll say in much lesser storms, I think I've told you personally, I was out for six days and neighbors out for nine days in past storms. So with 600,000, I saw a time when the outage map, which I live on, went up to 602,000. So I was surprised to hear 595. But anyway, that's out of 853,000 customers, you said. So that's, that is quite a lift. I know it was robust, and I know we had unique challenges too, that some communities couldn't get to, I mean, there was four days before you could even cross Fowler Avenue, again, I'll say, and some other places, you know, due to the flooding in places as late, I know you said Friday, even as late as today's Wednesday, it's hard to know anymore, but Sunday, I had a call from that area, Shangri-La, that the water that hadn't initially gone up in someone's home had entered someone's home there. So I know it was a big, big, heavy lift, and it was, you know, I was watching as it would go down 100,000 or 30,000, and also go down overnight by 40,000, you know, from the time I fell asleep till the time I woke up in the morning, because I know that's a number, that for most people, that is what they look to most because they're just desperate to get back the, what electricity provides us. And as well, the first couple of days were hot, but it got better, and that, you know, people were a little more tolerant when it wasn't, wasn't as hot. But I'll also reiterate what Commissioner Cohen said about, and I know it is very costly to underground retroactively the power lines, and I know you talked about doing some, I guess it's, you were talking about 100 miles a year? Yeah. And with some 6,000 miles, it's going to be a very, very, very long time to do that. So, you know, any attention that can be given to that, we do have the tree canopy, and in some places, the tree canopy opened up a lot, and so maybe now is the time to, it won't be quite as difficult possibly, but to really be thinking about that. But I do think the effort was extremely robust. I'm glad that you listened and did 6,000 support teams or 6,000 line workers to help, and it's just a big, big lift. Thanks.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Chair. If you've heard me talk at all, you know I have a true affinity for TECO, and the results that you all delivered post-storm just made my affinity for the company that much stronger. I wanted to talk to two things. One, I wanted to be sure to also, of course, your team is amazing. I've talked to probably a ton of people that I know personally on your team, and they would help me in different areas depending on what their role was. But Andy Taylor has gone above and beyond helping us in a particular neighborhood that still has several residents without power, going over headlines because they're still underwater. We're going to be talking about that later today, so I wanted to be sure to publicly thank him. I also didn't know if you wanted a chance to speak because I don't, what I'm hearing is like that underground might have been better in this, and I think I'm just in a little tiny bit, I know, and specifically speaking about the port and being a port commissioner, that underground doesn't necessarily solve all the problems, that true resiliency is what both to have underground and above ground, like they're going to have in the future at the port because of the water intrusion type issue. So I didn't know if you wanted to talk to that so people don't think that that would be the end-all. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, I'll just answer that very quickly. It is true that undergrounding is not a silver bullet. It's a silver bullet for hurricane-force winds, but to the extent you get saltwater intrusion or a storm surge like we had with Helene, or even flooding like we had with Milton, I mean, the fact that underground infrastructure and water don't mix is why there are 40 residents at Shangri-La who don't have power this morning. So a mix of the two is clearly superior, but when you sort of consider, you know, we are very committed to undergrounding. I forget now, I guess it was Commissioner Cohen who asked, are we going to continue? Yes, we're going to continue to add at least 100 miles of existing overhead underground. Anything new we put in tends to be underground, but it's not a silver bullet. There is still some risk associated even with underground electric infrastructure.
Okay. I'll see anyone else in the queue. Ms. Collins, appreciate the time and update very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, Bonnie.
Thank you. The next item is item F4. This is Commissioner Kemp's item regarding doing independent investigations on devastating stormwater.
Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. And just, I know we've had all of these comments, but just for the public and for the record, I'll just, a couple of things that are, I'll just start with. I just want to, if you look at the evacuation zone maps and you look south of the Little Manatee River where most of the, all the commission, except myself, looked to support an F dot exit there, south of the Little Manatee River are evacuation zones, almost all exclusively A and B from the water to 301, to do heavy development in there, to do anything but rural and agricultural as it is now, I think, is adds to the problem. So I'll just say that I'll have very few other meetings to ever point this out. At any rate, my item focuses on the issue of stormwater flooding, and by that I mean flooding associated with stormwater and stormwater systems as opposed to flooding associated with lakes, rivers, and streams. Stormwater flooding involving ditches, ponds, canals, pumps, stormwater areas that are constructed and operated both by the municipalities and by private property owners to contain, control, and move rainwater. This runs along with what Councilman Louis Viero has been bringing or has brought up at City Council. It's also different from Commissioner Miller's item, which focuses on flooding associated with the lakes and rivers and streams. I absolutely support that effort as well. As I had said, I was, someone had called me from, with flooding on Sunday at Lake Shangri-La. But mine focuses here on stormwater and the need for independent local investigation, review, you know, outside consulting to look at this and the flooding that occurred. Both efforts are needed. My hope is that we can all graze aboard what needs to be done and looked at. Residents experienced devastating stormwater flooding in several places throughout the county. The flooding occurred in areas that were not, and this is, I think, has been brought up, but is, it kind of was shocking to me, and I know it was shocking to the residents, that it was in areas that were not flagged as evacuation areas, which I guess have typically been designated by whatever authority in response to storm surge rather than flooding that happened not in Helene but what happened in Milton. The flooding occurred in areas that were not an evacuation zone. I spent a lot of time at the university area, also working on getting shelter and food and all kinds of resources there at several different complexes that the first floors were underwater. But the residents there were not aware of, in any way, of the danger they faced. They had cars sitting in parking lots that ended up in water up to their doors. They did not know that it was evacuation zone. There could have been something done, at least the mall had a two-story, the mall was covered with water. Fowler Avenue was covered with standing water for four days, but they could have at least maybe parked it up in the garage at the mall, the higher levels, and all the cars in that community, which people are now without, could have, could have been saved so that they could get back and forth to work and where they need it to go now. And I have to say too, the City of Tampa, one thing they did, which was really good before the storm, is announce that anybody could park in any City of Tampa parking garage to put their cars higher up. And I know University of South Florida as well would have had a lot of those resources that people maybe could have done that in that area, and I'm just speaking to that area. But I know I saw a lot of the areas that flooded as well in Plant City, took part in the Forest Hills, and talked to residents at Forest Hills, and had calls with many other communities, including Lutz. I know Town and Country has always had very bad flooding. This is not to leave out any of the places that were initially hit by storm surge or any of the, in terms of recognizing their needs, but this, it's especially shocking, I think, when people are in an area that is absolutely not even an evacuation zone in any way, and they, they don't know, and they were never prepared. So in just some of the areas, the university area, the Forest Hill neighborhood of Tampa, and some of the locations in Plant City, and I have been over the years familiar with Duck Pond Project, which the county invested a lot in with pumping of water and connected water bodies that were both in unincorporated county, surrounding the university area, as well as going across Fowler Avenue and down into the city. And so that is, again, an area that I think I'm, you know, I just think all of these are very localized and complicated, and each has its own story and needs and, you know, possible ways to harden and protect and at least warn and have in the future. So my motion is to direct that Hillsborough County work with the City of Tampa and Plant City to obtain an independent investigation and assess what caused devastating stormwater flooding that occurred along Fowler Avenue in the university area, Forest Hills, neighborhood of Tampa, and areas of Plant City, and there may be as well other areas that fit under that category too, and make recommendations about how to protect the public from these events in the future.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Rather than making a separate motion to discuss Pinecrest in the area around Lado High School, I'd like to actually ask that if by friendly amendment, it could be added to this motion, and I just want to tell the board very briefly what happened there. There, they are not in an evacuation zone, and their flooding was mainly caused by wastewater, wastewater that came up through the toilets and through the sinks in the bathtubs and flooded their homes with up to four feet of wastewater. And so I think that we have got to get to the bottom of how a neighborhood that was very recently repaved, where a lot of work has been done, could flood so badly with absolutely no warning to residents, and also what we can possibly do to prevent this from happening in the future, because you have an entire area where nobody had, for the most part, nobody had flood insurance because nobody thought that they needed it. And I really feel strongly that we need to get to the bottom of how this could happen in a place that has essentially never flooded before, and that it would be wastewater that's coming up. So if, Commissioner Kemp, if we could add that to your motion, I would appreciate it.
And Commissioner Hagan. Yes, that and anything else, I think that is, you know, like that, that needs to be looked at, you know, is important. Like I, I recognize that Town and Country, even in the past, has had flooding, and a lot of these, like you said, people didn't have insurance. I had talked to people in Forest Hills only, some people lived in their homes for 60 years, and they did not have flood insurance. They knew the possibility of that. At the university area, there's a bunch of tenants that were leasing, and all the ones on the first floor were locked out. Some said that their landlords had been charging, the companies had been charging them insurance fees every month on their, with their rent, and they had understood those to protect their property, and I think we can look into this too. And now it was said, oh, no, that was the insurance for the company. So there is a lot of places to go with this. People who also have lost their cars if they weren't insured with comprehensive insurance, that is another issue. It's just, but I'd be glad to add that, and it's just a broad, I'd like to look at all of that.
Okay. Commissioner Wustel.
Thank you. I think that either way, we know that some type of comprehensive look at, so I mean, targeted studies, I don't know if it's, this is the most effective way. I'm going to have, and have a future item, which reminds me to thank SWF MUD. So thank, I don't think that they've been mentioned yet today, but they were so helpful in addressing some of the concerns throughout this. And my future item is going to include us working with SWF MUD and those partner organizations. So I don't know, there's just so many different communities that were impacted in different ways. I don't know if the most effective approach is going to be this hotspot targeting investigations. I just, and maybe we can get some guidance on that if we're going to have four different ones, that we can come together as a unified board and just say, hey, let's just do one comprehensive look. Let's get the NOAA data, the SWF MUD data, and go from there. So that's just a recommendation on whether or not this passes. Before we approve anything, I want the costs to be brought back to us, especially if we're going to have other competing ones. I think Commissioner Hagan can compete, can appreciate that of understanding what the scope and costs are going to be of some of these studies. He's probably dealt a lot with that. I'll just say for Cinnamon Cove, I mean, when I was brought there, just to give the board perspective, their drains were not filled with debris. Their drains were filled with rotting fish because this was a massive hurricane storm event that brought in fish over them and probably rained it into their community. That's where those fish came from. That's where those fish came from, more than likely. So I just want to create some perspective so we can vote yes on these, but as long as it's not us enacting, right, we've got to find who's going to do it and what that cost is going to be before we approve anything. Can I get some clarity on that? From anybody?
I mean, I'll let Bonnie opine, but my understanding is just hoping to come back to give us a better idea. And clearly, I mean, Commissioner Winstall brings up a good point, not sure the best way to address the cumulative impacts through all the communities. I've got a couple I'm going to mention, so I don't know the best way to do it, but there needs to be a macro or cumulative review, and certainly any costs associated, that would, I would, my expectation would be to come back for us to review first, but Bonnie, please.
And thank you, because you all, several of you have very similar types of requests, and we are asking those things ourselves. And I think probably the best approach might be for us to come back with a recommendation to you and an approach to address this. It will require some external assistance to do this analysis, give you a feel for cost as well as timeline, and perhaps we could do that and address all of these issues that are, you know, so well deserved to be analyzed.
Well, I'll vote yes on all of them, just saying that at the end, I would just think that a comprehensive approach, and that's what my future item is just going to basically be about fact finding and analysis. So I'll just leave it there. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda.
Yes. Yes, so I was in the queue because I did want to expand the investigation to be countywide, wherever there was major flooding, and also, as Commissioner Cohen mentioned, about the wastewater flooding was just horrific. I mean, there's people that lost absolutely everything in their homes, and it was just so much devastation, and I think it's important that we, the investigation to be countywide. Thank you.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Mine is related to, and I want to ask George, I know we had a conversation on yesterday, but as having a master drainage plan in place to help with some of the flooding in various communities, you and I talked about it, but it's probably Josh. Come on up, Josh. Good morning.
He looked a little perplexed.
I know, I know. But George and I was talking so much yesterday. But Josh, would it be feasible to consider having a master drainage plan in various communities so that we kind of know in advance in areas that we have not gone into before, looking at drainage and start thinking about it?
Yeah, listening to this discussion, I do think that would be a good idea, like Bonnie mentioned, for us to review and maybe come back to the board with some recommendations on how we'd like to tackle this and present that to you, maybe through a workshop or some other means. So, I mean, the county does have 17 different watersheds that we review and update watershed master plans, and so those are some of the kind of things that we might want to be able to look at with you all as well and see what recommendations can come out of that in conjunction with what we've experienced here with these events.
Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
I don't know procedurally if this can wait until I'm up, but I'm, of course, going to support this, and I think that, you know, one of the things I was going to say is that it's going to be a tool that we would use in a task force for my motion, right? So, and to Cameron Sepeda's point, I don't even think it needs to just be Hillsborough County. My request is actually for regional. So SWIFTMUD crosses several regions. So, for example, the flooding that I occurred in the northeast part of the county was from Polk County and from Pasco County that flowed into our county, so we can't just look at it in a silo. And the second part is, is I don't think the community wants us to wait for some report or some decision of how we're going to move forward. I think that we really need to take pretty decisive action, and the residents that are still flooded today in my district deserve that.
No, that's a good point, and I'll just close by saying, number one, I think this was an excellent discussion, obviously extremely timely, and I like the approach and suggestion by Bonnie to bring back, you know, recommendations on how to, you know, tackle this issue from a, you know, from a macro or broad perspective. I do want to ask, I was going to make a separate motion, I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to toss these in there as well with Commissioner Kemp, if she's comfortable with it. Any issues associated with Brushy Creek, Sweetwater Creek, and Curiosity Creek? I got to tell you that, I know we're running behind, I'll be real quick, but I did my surveying around my district, and I went just off of Ehrlich to a road, actually called Auto, and of course saw the, I should say typical, but the typical huge mass pile of storm debris. And then the very next day, I received an email about, you know, our streets being ignored, and it was literally one street west, and the devastation of pile after pile of drywall, personal belongings was massive. I mean, I videoed it, and it was one street, one block west, but they back up to Brushy Creek. And never would have thought, right outside of Northdale, you would think high and dry, little bit of flooding here, there, but nothing severe. These people lost everything. So Commissioner Kemp, you okay with concluding that? I know we're going to bring everything back, but I didn't want...
I really meant to be a catch-all of all things, but...
I just didn't want these folks who feel ignored that we were only focusing on certain areas, but it's going to be broad-based, county-based, actually regional-based, thanks to Commissioner Miller. So wanted to just identify that and make sure that they know that we're aware of it, and we're going to do everything that we can. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda, and then we'll close.
Yes, so that's why I was saying countywide, then it would include everything. Also, with the issue of anything coming from another county would obviously be able to show that as well, which seems to be the case, that that is happening. So that would kind of cover everything there.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Miller. Please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay.
Thank you. And the next item is F5, and I, just to give you all a quick update, we are able to defer item E2 and G1 so far, so I just wanted to let you know that I am trying to manage the agenda going forward.
All right, we're getting there.
We're getting there. The next item is item F5. Commissioner Miller, this is your item.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you. So I don't want to continue to beat this. We obviously know there was significant flooding throughout the county for various reasons, and as we just voted, we're going to be getting, you know, a comprehensive report on that. I think that will go along nicely with my request, and, I mean, I could read it specifically, but I'd like to buy, you know, the plan would be like by November 13th to hire a qualified consultant to lead this task force or, you know, task forcing combined with that. But specifically, we need to look at the immediate and long-term stormwater needs, and the task force should include representatives from the city of Tampa, from city of Plant City, Hillsborough County, as well as experts from the Southwest Management District, the EPC. I think it's important, the citizens that, you know, were very much affected, we have some farmers that, you know, we heard it talked about today, you know, several generations, they have knowledge on water flows that would be helpful, and also other key stakeholders. The task force is the important part, right? That's going to lead and allow everybody to have those voices at the table, that we, you know, each one of us talked about, the different phone calls that we took throughout the county, but that's why it's important to me that all of these players be at the table and that it's a task force. I don't really want somebody to go do an investigation and give me a report back at some unspecified time in the future. So my request is for that.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Winstall.
Thanks. I just want to, I think there's, I appreciate aggressive timelines. I don't know that one of them can be met. I just don't, no, I just don't know that they could find an appropriate vendor by November the 13th. I think that's going to be a challenge. I always support and appreciate ambassadorial work from any of my colleagues that would like to go and do it on their own time. Please don't workshop me to death. And so I'll support it. I think that your timeline's probably going to have to be, I got my own task force or something that was supported by Super enjoy the board. I will support you in a task force. I think that you can reach out and invite these, if you get the task force approved with a yes here, you can invite any of these partner agencies and farmers that you want to have see at the table. You can just name them if we approve the task force, so I don't know that you need to be that specific. I would suggest that on some of these, I mean, people might not want to hear it, but on some of these communities, you might have to ask Mr. Bellotti about special assessments that may or may not be available, because one of them that I see on here is probably what it would take if they want to improve their stormwater management, especially since it was approved like three decades ago, so I'm not sure what we can do for that one. But so if it's just that you're wanting a task force that you want to be on and designate some of these community partners that are willing to, obviously, we can't direct SWIFTMUD, even though I don't, I don't know that they would say no if they can allocate a representative, and any farmer that wants to commit their time, I'll support that. So is you wanting a task force that you will lead, you're going to have some assets from staff, but then these other outside agencies is obviously volunteer.
I don't necessarily that I need to lead it. If it takes my request, and again, this is just my inexperience, I guess, serving as Commissioner, if it takes the request to ask staff to do that, I just don't want it to be a report. I need it to be a task force so that these folks have a voice. The people that are coming to me, so leadership, of course, I'm in Plant City, they have not had their city meetings, so they haven't been able to vote on it, but the entities need to be able to sit at a table and talk to one another, not just give their position, because we need to be able to have actionable items so that, you know, God forbid if we're ever hit with a one-two punch like this. We understand, we've talked about it a million times already today about what a catastrophic storm this is, but we owe it to the leaders that may follow 20, 30 years from now, that we actually did something to make sure. I still have major thoroughfares in East County and neighborhoods underwater 14 days after a storm. We need to be able to tell the community why, and the task force will solve that problem.
I guess then...
You're asking me a procedural, and I don't really know.
No, you're wanting, so you're wanting the independent contractor they find to be the leader of the task force.
Correct.
And I guess that we would have to well define the scope of who would be on that task force, so, just so it doesn't become very unruly for you. So just a thought.
Yes, sir.
I'll wait and hear what the administrator says.
And how we've handled, and Bonnie wants to make some comments in the past, make some comments also, in the past, how we've handled it is, you know, staff has brought back a list of recommended members of the task force, and then ultimately for us to approve, but I would suggest we do that at the next meeting, have that, you know, back to us, including, as Commissioner Winstall said, the scope for us to review as well. So Bonnie, with that, you want to make some comments?
Thank you. I did want to speak to the timing. This is not, I don't want you all to be under an illusion that this is an easy answer. This is going to take time. It will take time to get a consultant, and any task force, we want to hear from all the parties, but it does normally result in a written report because it should have actionable items that we could consider and take effect, understand what they are, timeframe, cost, all of that. So it's usually quite thorough, but I don't want you to think that this is something that's going to be able to be analyzed immediately.
No, I would, again, just suggest for the next meeting, I think at a minimum, you can bring back a recommended list of folks that should be at the table, and then we can go from there, but I think that's the first step in setting this, understanding that it's not an immediate fix. So, okay. Commissioner Myers.
I echo those comments, because that's what I was going to say, is that we have a list, but the 13th is just too short of a notice to try to hire a consultant to get this done, you know? And it just need to come back to us so we can select and have a scope, so that we can give directions to staff of what to go out and look for.
Commissioner Kemp.
Not to belabor, but I do think it's important, I mean, and thank you for clarifying, but I never expected that there would be answers immediately or all this could be implemented, but I think to at least let people know and be assured that we will be moving forward. I, of course, won't be here, but we will be moving forward in a direction of looking at this and trying to, again, harden and do everything we possibly can with resiliency in the future, and also, I'm very concerned about the evacuation zones sooner than later as well, but that we are just starting to begin to that process and assure people that we will be, we will be moving that way.
Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you. I was just going to recommend that maybe an amended motion that the board is directing the county administrator to work with your office to make, to ensure that the appropriate key players on your task force are brought back as recommendations to the board, in addition to any that staff may deem necessary, and that way that there's no questions leading up to or any unforeseen roadblocks, is that just, we're just empowering your office to develop what you would like in your eyes to be that task force to be for these specific communities. So a simple amendment directing the county administrator to work with your office to implement that task force and develop its key players.
You okay with that, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
All right, so we got a motion. We have a second. No other comments. Please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right.
Thank you. We're moving away from hurricane. The next item is item E1. This is a special appearance by Santiago Carrada, president and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, to present their semi-annual activity report, and that will be followed by item B2 regarding a modification to the tourist development plan for '24 and '25 fiscal years.
I would have said good morning, but now it's good afternoon.
Yes. Well, good afternoon, Honorable Chair Hagan, honorable commissioners, our esteemed county staff, those here still in the auditorium and watching from home. I'm not going to belabor the thank you, but I am going to say thank you. Thank you for your leadership, your tireless efforts. As a citizen of our county and the city of Tampa, watching you in action is remarkable. So thank you, thank you, thank you. As a former government employee with the city of Miami, city of Tampa, Miami-Dade County Public Schools, and I feel as an employee of Hillsborough County as well, it's a difficult, difficult task. Believe it or not, back in 1992, I was a young shelter manager during Hurricane Andrew down in Ground Zero and homesteaded. So I know the difficulties that have been mentioned here today firsthand, and the incredible job that you have to do to get us back together. So again, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you for supporting what we do. I hope to provide just a sliver of positivity in all the difficulty we've heard today, because up until about six, eight weeks ago, we were having a phenomenal tourism year. So want to capture some of those highlights, make it very, very quick, because I also know I stand between you and probably some nourishment, so I'll be very, very quick. I don't know if you can see my presentation, but we've had some stellar numbers. I know I have it here, don't see it on the screen. There we go. Stellar numbers, these are Smith Travel Research numbers, average occupancy 71.3%, an average daily rate of over $162, revenue per all available rooms, Hillsborough County of 116. Quite honestly, year-to-date, this calendar year, we're surpassing those figures, believe it or not. So through September, our occupancy is over 72% compared to our fiscal year '24 occupancy rate. So again, very, very strong numbers, highly respected, and $1,840,000 collected in hotel taxable revenue, second year in a row that we do that. This was a benchmark we set back before COVID, and we expect it to hit a billion by 2025. Here, we hit it last fiscal year, and we've hit it again this fiscal year with a corresponding $65 million in excess of bed tax collections. And here, graphically, you see what has happened since fiscal year '15, as far as the growth of hotel taxable revenue, bed tax collections, and funding to our organization that we believe helps to create those other numbers through our marketing, our sales efforts, and all the work that we do around the world. Our economic impact study conducted by Tourism Economics for last calendar year shows that we had an excess of 27 million visitors to our county, and I love to show this because our international visitation grew by 49%. That, in fact, is due to some of the airlift we've been able to secure with our airport and our partners. And an interesting fact here is per visitor spending comparing domestic visitors to international visits. It's dramatic. They stay longer and spend more money, so that's why we continue to create airlift to other parts of the world to get international visitors here. The tourism economy is about $8.9 billion in Hillsborough County. That includes all spending across restaurants, retail, attractions, hotels, so it's a huge impact to our local economy, supporting over 59,000 local jobs with attached wages of $3.1 billion. So the lifeblood of many of our citizens, our neighbors, our friends, our families... our family members can be tied to our industry. And visitors generate over $535 million in local and state revenue and taxes. In fact, I mentioned this morning with Commissioner Wostel, thank you to all of you that connected with us prior to today and granting us this opportunity with such a busy day. We're working with our Hotel Motel Association, and ultimately with the Tax Collector's Office, to determine how much tourism assets contribute in property taxes to Hillsborough County and the cities they reside in. And it is an astronomical number. That's why it's incumbent on all of us, not just for the jobs, but for the property taxes that a Marriott Water Street delivers to the tax collector. That in addition, or a JW Marriott, any of our hotel properties, Busch Gardens contribute, and those go back into serving the residents and citizens of our cities and our county. Again, the estimates by our third-party Tourism Economics is that without tourism, we'd have to find an additional $955 in taxes from our residents. And again, these are not our numbers. We don't create these numbers. This is the foremost expert in economic impact of tourism to communities. So again, a big impact. Now getting into our work, we've had some great campaigns, and you can see there that our conversion advertising campaigns generated $37 million in hotel bookings. Those are attributed to true marketing that we can really, really say were attributed to our efforts, and 194,000 room nights booked. Obviously, because of all the attention Hillsborough County gets, we get free publicity and free marketing. This year, $28.7 million in earned media that we did not have to pay for. That's almost more than our budget, that our entire budget. So again, because of the attention that Hillsborough County and our local cities get, we're seeing more and more of that. Client events, 352 in-market events, 157 out-of-market events, bringing events to us. So the staff was very, very busy. Total groups that we were connected with visiting Hillsborough County, 449 events and conventions, yielding $227 million in economic impact. The next few slides, you'll see some of those examples. The Florida's Governor's Conference on Tourism, the Divine Nine meeting here during the Omega Convention. We had our friends with Destinations International visit our community. The foremost experts in tourism from around the world were here looking at how we handle tourism here. Here are some more images of that. And then, of course, I've already mentioned this, the airline partnerships. Very, very proud that we landed Aeromexico, worked with our airport on landing additional flights. So you see the many partners that we work with. Obviously, we also support our port with the Margaritaville at Sea, the newest cruise ship making Tampa home. And then we're very, very proud of the work we're doing with the school system. We knew there was a lack of programming in travel and tourism, so we worked with our superintendent, our high schools, to implement programs, but not only do that, but have our 900-plus partners engage with the high schools, adopt these programs, provide financial support, provide mentorship, job opportunities, instruction. So again, very, very proud. And then working with USF to make sure that that continuity exists. And this came out of COVID, when we lost so many, so many of our team members to that other catastrophe. Michelin Guide this year, year three, we now have 30 restaurants in the guide, five one-stars. So we're very, very proud of our work with our restaurant community. We put out our second edition of Tampa's Table, working with our restaurant partners, and then also supporting our mural program, our conservation institutions, as well as the arts, putting out calendars. I'm going to end by, again, saying thank you. And we have an item, as our county administrator mentioned, which would provide us with $6 million, and no one budgeted for recovery marketing resulting from Helene and Milton. And I can tell you that some of the images that have gone out internationally have created this sense, a side effect to these hurricanes, that we're not open for business, that we've been decimated. I can't tell you how many international press announcements I've had to do and conversations with media all over the world, letting them know that, yes, we have communities that have suffered and that have been impacted, but our tourism infrastructure is still in place, that our airport is operational, our port is operational, our hotels are operational, restaurants. And again, those are all of our friends that work in that industry. So again, $6 million would go to recovery marketing, because we have to try to change that narrative immediately. What often happens, and I've been doing this now for 12 years, what often happens after a near-miss hurricane is that we do catch displacement, and we do capture crews that maybe can't find hotels in other places. But once they go away, you have to refill those with conventions, meetings, and tourists, or else those hotel occupancies drop dramatically. So we need to make sure that all of the success that you're seeing, that we've seen for many, many years, continues in light of the difficulty we face. So I'm going to end there, and thank you again for all you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Santiago. Normally, I would vote against you on this, because I want the money, as I found out, could go to infrastructure. But I do agree with you this time around, so I'll move for approval.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, sir.
Second. And that's for item B2, sir.
All right. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Myers?
I was going to do a motion for both, to receive the report in B2, but we got it in. Thank you.
All right. Sounds good. Commissioner Wostel, do you have any other comments? Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry. The motion was Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeta. No one else in the queue? Please accord your vote.
Aye.
Oh, you did? Commissioner Cameron Sepeta. There you go.
I need everybody to please record their vote.
Please re-record your vote.
This is Commissioner Cohen. I vote aye.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
Thank you. Thank you, county administrator. Thank you, commissioners, and God bless you and the work you have to do. Thank you so much.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item.
Okay, thank you. And as I mentioned, item E2 is going to be deferred.
Yes.
Then we can go to the regular agenda. And the first item is item B1. This is authorizing the setting of a public hearing on November 13th regarding the Hope Funds. And so this is an ordinance, and therefore requires, an amendment requires, a public hearing.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Brenda Brackens, Affordable Housing, here to ask you to authorize setting a public hearing for November 13th at 10:00 a.m. to request the unallocated Hope Funds to be reallocated for a one-time use to meet urgent community needs as a result of the recent storms. The fiscal impact of this one-time reallocation of Hope Funds is $5.6 million. I'm available for questions, and I recommend you approving a setting this public hearing.
Move approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Kemp. Go for a second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Myers. Is there anyone else in the queue? Please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. The next item is item B3. Kevin Bricki will present this item. This is a budget amendment relating to our Catastrophic Disaster Recovery Fund. This does require a supermajority vote.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management of Budget. Item B3 asks you to approve by supermajority vote a budget amendment to transfer $60 million from the county's Catastrophic Reserve Fund to the, our Hurricane Milton Disaster Fund and appropriate it. These funds would facilitate debris removal and other related costs. And as you heard earlier, for a 90-day period, we expect that to be reimbursed by FEMA at 100%. Subsequent to that, eligible costs would be reimbursed by the state and FEMA at 87.5%.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Court, you, Kemp?
I'll move approval, but I also just wanted, I also just wanted to say, this is so critical about, in regards to our reserve funds, and this is why we don't, you know, we look at those and take them very seriously, and not just think about cutting them, because this disaster of such immense proportions comes straight after.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thank, if we can just talk to the AEDC and see if there's any way any of these funds might go towards helping them. I have an item that'll hopefully get approved to be on here, but in any way of helping them with all of their huge plastic debris removal that's going on, they're not going to be recovered by FEMA. So anything that we can do to incorporate trying to help them, just looking it over would be appreciated.
I'm sorry, to whom? I'm sorry.
The agricultural community.
Thank you.
Okay. To the motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Myers and Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
All right, next item.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Myers' item, item F2 regarding the Tampa Bay Caribbean Carnival.
Commissioner Myers?
Move for approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried. Six to one. Commissioner Cameron Sepeta voted no.
Next item.
Okay, the next item is Commissioner Wostel's item. This is item F6 regarding the emergency rate for agricultural disposal.
Commissioner Wostel?
Do, is it already approved to be on here? And I don't need to ask for the waiver? Okay, cool. I read on our county's website, and it seems like it requires an ordinance to be enacted. I know it's been done in the past for solid waste, to bring back an ordinance that would allow us to enact the emergency rates for the agricultural community to dispose of the plastic and all of the debris that they saw on their farms. Is that correct, that it requires an ordinance?
No, sir. It can be done by ordinance or by the county administrator in the event of an emergency.
Okay. Can we just direct you to do that?
Yes. So there is an emergency provision in the ordinance
Okay.
that says either the board could do it by resolution, or I can just do it during an emergency. So we don't even have to go through that step. I could just do it.
Will you do it?
Sure.
Thanks, because they need it.
Short and simple. One thing, I wasn't sure where Commissioner Wostel was going, so I probably should have brought this up earlier. But real quick, it's regarding an issue that I, we were contacted by a resident, and haven't seen this situation before. But it's a resident that called about dropping off storm debris, and he was told driver's license, I think it was tax bill. And what happened was, he hired a company at his expense to drop off the storm debris, you know, from his home, not neighbor, from his home. They brought his license and the tax bill, yet was told that he would have to pay because he wasn't there, and it was a contractor. Now, also what happens is, it's my understanding that the contractor in these situations, there are, they're having to pay the, I guess it's called a tipping fee. Contractors in this situation, they're already adding in the tipping fee into what they're charging the resident to pick up their stuff. So the resident's paying the contractor, and then goes to our place, has to pay again at our facilities. And to me, that just, that doesn't make, doesn't make sense. I mean, our resident is taking the initiative, frankly, to do county's responsibility at their own time and expense, and then we're charging them. And the fact that they know that FEMA is reimbursing the county for our efforts, so that just adds insult to injury. Now, I was made aware this morning, from Kim, of, actually during our meeting, that they've implemented a, I guess, a form for residents can fill out in a somewhat similar situation, have contractors dispose of storm debris and waive the fee. So that's great. I want to thank you for doing that, and that's, I think that's appropriate. I guess the question that I have, or what I want to see, well, I know of one, I don't know how many, but I think they should be, they should be reimbursed what they had to pay. So anything else you'd like to add, or along those lines? But thank you for doing that. I think this is definitely a step in the right direction, and it makes sense.
You're welcome, Kim Byer, Assistant County Administrator. Thank you for bringing that situation to our attention. Typically, during a storm, it's, our debris sites are for our residents. We have to verify that they are residents, because that's how we get reimbursed from FEMA, is to confirm it's coming from the residential right-of-way. In this situation, we are having contractors that are helping us pick up from the right-of-way as residents are contracting with these vendors. So in this situation, we're able to work with our debris consultant and develop this form where residents can verify and sign that they are not paying for disposal, that the contractor isn't, they're not paying the contractor for disposal, and their insurance is not reimbursing them. So in this situation, we'll be able to accept debris from contractors.
Okay.
In regards to reimbursement, they more than likely came through the solid waste scales, so I'm not really sure how we would verify that. We could, I could work with Damian to see if there's a process in which we can, we can look into each transaction, or they can provide their receipt, and we can seek reimbursement.
If we can, if we can do that, it just, to me, it was adding insult to injury. He identified the site, correctly identified that we had the site at Ed Ratus, I guess he lives in that general area.
Right.
But it was open for, I don't know, one weekend, two weekends, something like that. And in fact, he works in the weekend, so that's why he couldn't do it. And so it just, he was going above and beyond, and it was getting, he was getting, having to pay, and then knowing all well that FEMA is going to reimburse us. He's like, well, man, county's double-dipping. I'm getting paid, I'm paying twice, seems like. So it was just, it was patently unfair. And not complaining, I just, I think we found a good solution, but wanted to, I had, you know, was bringing it up in advance of the meeting, and then during the meeting, you know, Rich handed me this. So thank you for doing that. And I'm going to just going to have my staff work with Damian to see what we can do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right, next.
Okay. Our next item is item A28. This is the item that was pulled from consent.
Commissioner Wostel?
Thanks. This one's pretty simple. We changed our, we amended our cone of silence policies to allow for these types of situations exactly to come up and be able to handle it before it's too late for us to hear about complaints. It looks like on Section 8 of the RFP, as I read it, it clearly says that county staff can initiate one or more best and final proposals back to us. I used to use these tactics in private business to negotiate commodity metal goods. It always resulted in savings for the organization. And it seems like in this situation, we should do just that. So I would like to, I'm happy to hear Mr. Stromer's opinions, but it seems like if we didn't do that, I would be bringing forward a motion to direct county staff to exercise that option for a best and final between the two bidders that were at the end there.
So is there a motion that you want to make?
I can make it before or after, if he's wanting, if he's needing to opine after that.
Good afternoon. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. So this was an RFP that went out. We had two firms. And again, this is for a facility that's going to be built. The sole risk is on the contractor to build the facility. We're simply going to be a consumer. We're going to guarantee a certain amount of material that's going to go to this facility. We also have performance guarantee as well. So you go through the entire process. The committee met, they evaluated. We were fortunate, he had two stellar firms. The committee gave maximum points to both firms. It came down to cost. One was like $103 a ton. It was like 96.10, 96.20 per ton. So they ended up prevailing. This thing with the best and final offers in public procurement, the only time you do a best and final offer is if there's something that needs to be clarified, if there's something that is, is there something in the scope that changed? Because what we sent out, if anything changes, if we do a, what I'll call a BAFO, the best and final offer, if we send that out, I usually do it as open, meaning that everybody can have another chance if we change the requirements. Under the, and you may be familiar, the federal acquisition regulation has a name for when this happens. You have to have some reasonable and rational basis for why you're going back and now asking for final offers. You have the prices. All the prices are exposed now. So it'd be very easy to beat the guy that's low, because that's been exposed, which is why the federal acquisition regulation calls it an improper auction technique. Generally, it's called auctioning, where you start rounds of best and final offers, and you start to work them against each other. And that's what the intention is. So I don't recommend doing it. If it's a matter of staff going back and talking to the low and see if you can go down even further, currently, we're paying, I believe, about $150 a ton. And this will reduce it down to $96 a ton. Again, the county has no risk on this, because they have the full burden of building this facility, everything. We're simply, when it's done, we have an agreement that we're going to provide a minimum amount of material to this facility. And we have a performance bond in
Well, I mean, I guess, I guess my reasoning for it is, is I just, I just voted no on increasing solid waste increases because I'm desperate to find ways for us to avoid having to continue to do that in the future. And we have the contractor who's saying that there is an opportunity for new revenue sources that would be different than was initially captured, and that in a best and final, that could be presented. So I will, I have to go after an attempt to try and capture as much revenue as we can in these different departments that have had consecutive rate increases over the past several years, even immediately prior to me being elected. So I guess that's, that's my angle for this, is that if they're here saying that there's new revenue sources, I will, I will make a motion, Mr. Chair, to direct staff to request a best and final offer from the two respondents to RFP 24-24791 for recovered materials processing facility services. The request should aim to maximize potential cost savings for Hillsborough County and invite the two respondents to propose alternative revenue sources that could generate additional income for the solid waste enterprise fund. That is my motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Wostol. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Commissioner Myers?
Scott, what's going to be different in the RFP if we go out again? Besides that they're looking for the best cost that we already have? So what's going to be so different in that RFP?
So Damian's here, and he can clarify, he can fix it if I say something correct. This package includes cost sharing already. I think the county has 85%. They share 15% with a vendor. It's already baked into this cake based on some indices that, that are in the RFP. So if we're saying now, if, that we want to open up and look at for additional opportunities for revenue sharing, that would be a change which would, I mean, that would be a change, which, if it's a cardinal change, a pretty substantial change, I kind of have to let the world know also that we're doing that, and get all new proposals, because there may have been somebody that did not propose because that wasn't part of the first one. I can't change the rules midstream. But I just want to, we've gone through this process. It was, it was a good, clean process. This is a little unique in that, once we have the pricing, then to allow somebody to say, wait a minute, we can do it better. Well, if the facility was there, the price should have been lower going into it then. It's easy to beat somebody. If I receive bids, give me a phone book, a phone, in about five minutes, I can beat every price that I get on a bid. So I just want to be careful that we don't set some precedent here. That's the only thing that, because this will start to get into a loop, and you get to this auctioneering, this auctioning that'll start this process. I just want to just give you a full eyes-wide-open on it.
All right. Thank you. Before I call Commissioner Kemp, Hank, can I ask you a quick question? Are you here, I'm assuming you're here for this.
Yes. Hank, in this county attorney's office.
I understand, or I think I understood what Mr. Stromer was saying, if there, I guess, I'm using my words, material changes to the RFP. But that being said, from a legal perspective, is there anything that, and I'm going to, I'm going to support Commissioner Wostol's motion, but from a legal perspective, is there anything that prevents us from, from doing that?
The RFP specifically says the county may go out for best and final offers. So all bidders were aware of that when this went out on the street. So you do have that option to move forward in that way.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Is this a supermajority vote?
No.
Okay. Just to reg, I'll just say that I'm, I will be voting no on this, and I will be deferring to the experienced judgment process of our procurement process and the work that's been done already.
Commissioner Wostol?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And just after some of Mr. Stromer's responses, and Hank had said, to be clear, though, to quell any concerns, 5.1.3.3.3, that's a lot of subnumbering categories.
A lot of theories.
We might want to look that over. The county may award new scores and establish new rankings based on interviews, reference inquiries, other information obtained through the county's investigations, and/or the submission of best and final offers. So it's, it's clearly advertised in the RFP to quell any concerns that might have been risen. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Myers, then we're going to vote.
Okay. So if it was advertised best and final, is that what we received was the best and final?
This is, these are the initial proposals, again, Scott Stromer. These are the initial proposal we received that were evaluated, they were interviewed, references were checked, all of that. It's, it's gone through the process. They put, we always want firms to put their best foot forward, and then we evaluate that. So this is the initial. If we do a best and final, that would be a first round. We'd have to send out in writing, and then we'd get new proposals back, and for some big pricing.
So Damian, what are we going to add in to this when we send it out again? What would be added? Because everyone had the opportunity to bid. So what are we going to add to this?
Damian Tramal, Solid Waste Management Department Director. Commissioners, I'm not sure. I'm going to be honest with you. We believe that what we submitted was a very well-thought-out RFP. There is, at this point, nothing that we are aware of that we would include in this, in a new RFP that we submit.
All right. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. The motion was not to add anything to the RFP. The motion was to encourage those two vendors to, and staff, to consider new lines of revenue. I'm not asking for any modification to the RFP.
All right. We got a motion by Commissioner Wostol, Second Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. Please record your vote.
No.
Motion carried. Four to three. Commissioner Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
Okay.
We're finally at future discussion items.
Okay. Anyone have any future issues? Commissioner Cameron Sepeda?
Yes. The board recently revised our standards for funding nonprofits. This was an important step to ensuring accountability and transparency for nonprofits receiving county funds. Many of our nonprofits provide vital services to our community. However, some of the nonprofits funded by the county are small and have very targeted focus on who they provide services to. For example, nonprofits serving the veteran community. I know I have also people that have a drug and alcohol rehabilitation that are small nonprofits, and also, for example, a Cuban, the Cuban Civic Club that has been providing services for over 60 years, that they need, you know, fire sprinklers and things like that. But although these nonprofits are smaller, that doesn't mean that they're less effective than large nonprofits that have budgets in the millions of dollars. In fact, I believe some smaller nonprofits can be more effective because they don't have large overhead for administrative salaries, or large advertising budgets, or other expenses that don't go directly to the people they're supposed to be serving. Unfortunately, this means smaller nonprofits often don't have the financial capacity to buy needed materials or pay for goods, and then wait for reimbursement from the county. This hampers their ability to provide necessary services. I would like for staff to review whether the county could provide advanced funding to those smaller nonprofits that find it difficult to operate on a reimbursement basis. And I realize that there may be state laws or other challenges to provide advanced funding, but I really would like to look into this because I think it's very important for our small businesses. Thank you. Small nonprofits. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. I would like to request staff to work with the appropriate community agencies in our community to find the next comparable rain event that flooded our upstream bodies of water, to highlight how that might impact, impact those of us that live downstream. And there's no timeline on this. I just think that it'd be a great educational tool. I believe that that comparative event should also analyze and take into consideration the very recent storm that presaturated all of our local grounds, and also pre-filled all of our local bodies of water that might not have yet been dispersed back into the bay. Thank you.
All right. See anyone else in the queue? Just want to thank everyone for their patience in addressing all the critically important issues we did today. With that, we're adjourned.